Welcome to the City Council's December 21st Special City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in the City Council chambers in accordance with Public Health Guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. Mayor Willison is recovering from an illness and will be participating virtually this evening. The mayor will likely remain mostly quiet, but will be listening intently. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Mayor Jen Willison, City Council members Drew Combs, Ray Mueller, and Betsy Nash. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Niradorti, and City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And again echoing a welcome to our special December 21st City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment tonight on an agendized item, after the Vice Mayor calls for public comment on that item, we ask for virtual attendees to engage that hand feature in the bottom of their screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. For our in-person participants, there are speaker cards at that back table, which can be completed and then returned to my desk. That includes my instructions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council member reports. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? Okay, under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first regular business item is... And Ms. Heron, if you could read what that is, because my notes does not have it on there.
It is D1, recognition of outgoing City Council member.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, please call for public comment on item D1.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item D1, recognition of our outgoing City Council member Ray Mueller, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. For anyone in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and then return it to the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be Charles Stone.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Charles Stone. I'm a former member of the Belmont City Council, and I'm here this evening to thank my good friend Ray Mueller for his service not only to Menlo Park, but to the greater county of San Mateo over the last, I think, 11 years now. When I first became a council member, there were few people who were more welcoming and more willing to provide much-needed advice than Ray was. And he was an excellent role model for me, and I was able to pay that forward and learn that that's the way that things are done. Ray has been such an important voice on matters of housing, transportation, and climate change. When Peninsula Clean Energy was being started up, that there were being stood up, there were a number of very contentious debates that took place. Ray was always involved, giving good advice, understanding all the perspectives, and making sure that this probably most impactful thing that the county has done for climate change got off to a good start on the right foot. When it comes to housing, I think nobody in the county has been more willing to understand all sides of the housing debate. Ray certainly has been a champion for building, but has also understood the need to preserve and protect our neighborhoods and to listen to the folks who don't necessarily feel as friendly to housing as some of the rest of us do. It's going to be a tremendous loss for Menlo Park, but lucky for the county, Ray will be there, leading on the Board of Supervisors, where I look forward to seeing the great things he does. Congratulations, Ray. The people of Menlo Park and the people of San Mateo County owe you a tremendous debt.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Henry Riggs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed council members. I'm going to be very brief, because I couldn't possibly put into words the number of things that I would try to report on my long relationship with Mr. Mueller. I will say simply that across so many years, to have someone on council who is dedicated and thorough and at all times seeks to be reasonable and constructive, has been, in my opinion at least, a wonder for the city of Menlo Park. I think we will miss him greatly. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Mickey Winkler, and this will also be the final call for public comment on item D1.
So, good evening, everybody. I would just like to add to what Henry Riggs has just said. Ray has been so responsive to his constituents. I'm just astounded by the time he put has put into that. So, best of luck, Ray, in your new venture, and to us too, as members of San Mateo County. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Adina Levin. Adina, you should be able to unmute your end.
Uh-huh. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, wanted to convey thanks and appreciation to Ray Mueller for his dedicated service to Menlo Park and his upcoming dedicated service to the county of San Mateo.
Thank you for your... Oh, Adina, did you want to continue?
Wanted to keep it brief to avoid a late night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pam Jones.
Good evening. I'd also like to convey my appreciation and gratitude for the commitment and service that you, Ray Mueller, have had to the city of Menlo Park. And I am certain that you will give the best of yourself to San Mateo County, which will make all of us a better county. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you, everyone who spoke with the beautiful accolades for our outgoing Councilmember Mueller and Supervisor-elect. And to read his proclamation, I'd like to introduce City Councilmember Drew Combs.
Given that, you know, Ray is a big reason why I'm on this body, it really is an honor for me today to be able to read this proclamation. I will forewarn you, there are 14 whereas's, and I think like 10 is like superhero status. And so, I just wanted to give you guys a forewarning, but totally, totally deserved. Honoring Menlo Park City Councilmember Ray Mueller. Whereas, Ray Mueller was first elected at large to the City Council in 2012 and 2016, and elected to represent District 5 in 2020. And whereas, Ray Mueller was selected as Vice Mayor in 2013 and 2018, and served as Mayor in 2014 and 2019. And whereas, Ray Mueller has championed local causes that benefit members of the community, including personally recruiting a business group to take over the Gil Theater, which was renovated into a live entertainment venue, construction of mouths of bike lanes and sidewalks on routes to Hillview and La Intra Middle Schools, including on Santa Cruz Avenue and Sharon Road. And whereas, Ray Mueller initiated the outdoor dining parklet program to the city. As mayor, in 2014 advocated for outdoor dining space during the pandemic and supported the adoption of an urgency ordinance to help support and reactivate local businesses by temporarily allowing expanded dining and retail options on the sidewalk, in on-street parking spaces, public parking plazas, and/or privately-owned shopping areas and parking lots. And whereas, Ray Mueller in 2019 created a youth advisory committee to engage youth and local government, has taught leadership classes at the Menlo Park Boys and Girls Club, and hosted numerous school groups at City Hall for civics teaching days. And whereas, Ray Mueller approved transformative transit-oriented developments along the El Camino-Rial corridor, finally eliminating the blight from abandoned empty car lots that plagued the city for over a decade. And whereas, Ray Mueller is an advocate for affordable housing and served on the Board of Life Moves, one of the largest homeless service providers in Silicon Valley, and worked with Meta, formerly Facebook, to add housing units on its proposed campus expansion to construct a new community center and library while mayor in 2019, and created the Neighborhood Service Center, Police Substation, and Boe Haven in 2014. And whereas, Ray Mueller, in addition to his City Council services, has served as liaison for a variety of boards, including the County of Santa Clara Stanford Community Resource Group, where he negotiated contributions to the Menlo Park City School District related to student increase created by Stanford Housing Development and the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust Heart Board Member Agency Committee, MAC, assisting to engage with cities that are not on the Heart Board and provide them with the opportunity to comment on Heart's financial and program activities. And whereas, Ray Mueller adopted the city's first CO2 reduction target in 2013, served on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board, and in 2016 voted to enroll all city facilities in EOC 100, 100% renewable electricity, including city buildings, streetlights, and the electric vehicle charging stations. And in 2020, adopted the city's climate action plan. And whereas, Ray Mueller as mayor in 2014 was instrumental in the formation of Menlo Spark, a nonprofit working regionally to promote climate action policy. And whereas, Ray Mueller approved solar installations for City Hall, the Ariaga Family Gymnastics Center and Gymnasium, One Nada Harris Community Center, and the Corporation Yard funded energy retrofits in city facilities, which generated cost savings and benefits to the environment and funded the transition to LED streetlights in Menlo Park. And whereas, Ray Mueller always brought creative, outside-of-the-box solutions, seeking to maximize benefits to all stakeholders and reduce impacts to residents and businesses affected by changes. And whereas, Ray Mueller has been a leader in the community, demonstrating passionate direction over the past years, exemplifying a commitment to the individual idea as well as the neighborhood concern, protection of privacy rights, and promotion of transparency. And whereas, Ray Mueller is the first Menlo Park City Councilmember and formerly mayor elected to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. And the city knows how fortunate the county is to have gained such an engaged, thoughtful, and passionate member. And now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council recognizes and honors Ray Mueller for his dedication and service to the Menlo Park community. Yeah, and if I can just say, you know, personally, Ray, for, I think the past decade, you have been Menlo Park. And I think that there has been no person that has thought more about the city, about its residents, and about how we can work collectively to improve their quality of lives. And as a resident of the city, I say thank you. It has been an honor to be your colleague for four years. You guys don't know how many calls with Ray starts off with me picking up the phone and him saying, "San Carlos does this. We should do this." Or, you know, "San Mateo does this. We can do this better." And that just for me speaks to, again, he is always thinking about Menlo Park, always thinking, like I said, about approving the lives of its residents. And while we are very happy and proud to see you go on to the county Board of Supervisors, it is definitely a loss for us. My friend, I will miss you, and I treasure our time together.
I must not to talk a long time, because no one, I've watched a lot of these, and when it's your terms up, it's your turn to go. First off, I want to thank my wife, Kristen, who put up with so many, so many hours that I was away from home and also probably a loss in earning potential, but did it because she loves our community. And I want to thank my kids, who have no memory in their life of me not serving on the City Council. None, who've grown up and had to bear that, but did so coming to everything and learning and listening to their dad talk about things that I think a lot of kids don't have to listen to and pretending to be interested, probably sometimes when they weren't, and then being interested sometimes when they were, which blew me away. You know, it's funny, I teased Justin a lot about the fact that my picture's going to go above the garbage can. But it's really an honor to know that my picture's going to be there amongst so many former mayors. Mickey, to see you here tonight is wonderful. I think as a council member, the thing that you start to learn over time is the shared experience that you have with other former council members that you have with colleagues. It's a tough position to be in, to folks who watch that happen. I'd say to be kind, they're doing the best they can. And when people come at them, the fight-or-flight response turns on, and it's hard to get used to that, to be able to turn it off. So to those of you tonight who are applying, should you be successful, or even if you're not successful, should this engage you to want to be in further in public life, just remember that when the fight-or-flight response comes on, to do everything you can to turn it off and listen to people. Those wounds come deep. I've been served with a lot of people over the years. Yesterday, did a count, I've served with three city attorneys, six police chiefs, four city managers, 12 city council members during my time here, dozens of staff members. It is a wonderful place to work. It's an incredibly engaged city. Though, the one thing I'd say is that when you serve that long, you reflect, and you reflect on so many wonderful memories, and you remember your mistakes too. And so what I'd say to, if I have advice to colleagues, it's that let the little things go. Most of the time in government, what I started to learn, the more time that passed was most of the time, it's not, and any little thing that happens isn't intentional, most of the time. Most of the time, it's just people who have a lot on their plate, trying to serve 36,000 people, and they're working as hard as they can. And we have been blessed with such amazing staff. It's an honor to be ending this with you as City Manager, Justin. You're one of the first, I remember Andy Cohen, former mayor Andy Cohen, God rest his soul, when I was still Transportation Commissioner. One of the first things he said to me was, "You've got to go to lunch with this guy. I'm bringing you down to go. He's going to be our city manager someday." He was right, and it's great to see that the city is going to be left in great hands. I would go, I could just go through the list of so many people to talk about. Thank you, Charles, for speaking. There's a wonderful community I get to work with here in San Mateo County. Henry, thank you for coming tonight. You've been such a true colleague on the Planning Commission and through so many things. Seeing you both here makes me remember Catherine, who we miss dearly. Sorry. To my colleagues on the council, it's been an honor and privilege to share with you, to share this time with you. There's so much I'm leaving you with tonight. There's so much on your plate in the new year. I apologize for that, but I know you guys are going to do wonderful and be so thoughtful in that and bring that energy and passion that you brought to it. I'm not going to keep talking, because I said I'd be brief. But the one thing I would finish with is the one piece of advice is always remember never to underestimate the power of a sharp mind, a sincere heart, and a kind voice. And our story continues. I look forward to working with you all at San Mateo County on the Board of Supervisors. And I just want to finally say thank you to Menlo Park. It's been a tremendous privilege to work with the residents of this city for so long. This is an amazing city, incredible residents in every neighborhood who are passionate about it. When I first got on the council, I was told it was a tough place, because people were engaged. And the longer that that time went, the more I just appreciated it so much. It's an amazing city, and I will, I'll miss serving you as a City Councilmember here. Thank you. I would be remiss. I'm going to exercise some privilege. There is one last person to thank who's not here tonight. I don't know if she's at home or if she's not, but if I don't thank her before I leave, I want to thank Fran Dean from the Chamber of Commerce. I have had an incredible partnership with her from the time before I was a council member to present. The Chamber of Commerce in Menlo Park and Fran are intrinsic to this place. And it was, it's so odd, since City Council meetings, not to see her back there during COVID. And I just am going to miss tremendously working with her. So, thank you. So we will do this quick ceremony, calling up Councilmember Mueller's family. I just want people to also recognize that this wall of mayors was established in 2019 during Ray's term, his second term as mayor. And so it was a great ceremony, so it's very fitting that this last spot in this row and column is for Ray. And yes, we were able to move the trash can to the other side. But I appreciate his sense of humor that kind of keeps me going, and all of his inspiration over the years.
Ms. Heron, I'd like to open it up to City Councilmember comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I do see City Councilmember Nash's hand up.
City Councilmember Nash?
Thank you very much. So, Ray, congratulations. Your years of work to make our city a better place for residents, business, and visitors are widely recognized. I first met you in connection with some transportation matters. Residents of Santa Cruz Avenue were concerned about speeding and safety on our street, and you were eager to listen and organize the neighborhood. The group worked together for many years, resulting in the wonderful sidewalks and bike lanes on Santa Cruz Avenue, which has proved to be a huge community benefit. In fact, you inspired me to join the Bicycle Commission, which evolved into the Complete Streets Commission, which in turn led me to serve on council with you for the past four years. We will all miss your experience and are excited to see all you will do as the supervisor of San Mateo County District 3. Congratulations on your election to the Board of Supervisors. We wish you many successes, and please stay in touch.
Okay, then we can open it up to our virtual Vice Mayor and Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Mayor Willison? Would you like to go first?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I sent Councilmember Mueller my wishes earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. Councilmember Mueller, I first met you, I believe it was 2015, and I came because I had an issue, as most residents do. And I remember your kind-heartedness and also your responsiveness to my concern. And little did I know, a year later, I was going to run for council the first time. And I remember you being encouraging to me as my first time running for office. But listening to all the folks who've shared their love for you, dedication, thoroughness, reasonability, responsiveness, the wonder of Menlo Park, I think all of those words are definitely befitting for you. And I appreciate you being here for my first term on City Council. And I appreciate all of the encouragement that you've given me over the years. And I really look forward to working with you as a supervisor for San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Heron, we will move on to the next agenda item, regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first business item is D1, oops, I'm sorry, it is actually D2. Consider and interview candidates and adopt a resolution appointing a member to the Office of Menlo Park City Council for District 5 for the unexpired term of City Councilmember Mueller. To introduce this item is City Clerk Judy Heron.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do have a presentation this evening. Go ahead and get that up. Okay. All right, so good evening, Council. The item before you tonight is to consider and interview candidates and make an appointment to the upcoming District 5 vacancy. As an update, since the release of the agenda packet, Andrew Slater and Elizabeth Sullivan have withdrawn their applications. Staff recommends the City Council consider... Staff recommends the City Council consider and interview candidates and adopt a resolution appointing a member to the Office of Menlo Park City Council for District Five for the unexpired term of City Councilmember Mueller, which will be expiring in December of 2024. For some background, on November 17th, City Councilmember Mueller submitted a notice of resignation. The notice of resignation specifies that City Councilmember Mueller's resignation shall be effective upon appointment of a successor, but no later than January 1st of 2023. The City Council directed staff to begin the recruitment process to fill the District Five vacancy on November 30th. Staff published and advertised the notice of vacancy and recruitment between December 3rd and December 20th, and recruitment closed on December 20th at 5:00 PM. Staff released the received applications on the city's website on December 18th and updated that website as applications were received. The interview process is established by City Council Resolution Number 6775. Before the commencement of interviews, candidates shall be placed in a random drawing to determine the order in which candidates are interviewed. Candidates shall be allotted five minutes to introduce themselves to the City Council. Time limits shall be strictly enforced during this phase of the interview. Candidates may all be present at the same time that another candidate is being interviewed. To ensure equal opportunity and standardization, each City Councilmember will have an opportunity to ask questions of the candidates from the list of questions in the questionnaire. The questionnaire was approved as Exhibit A to the Resolution 6775, and all questionnaire questions were required in the application. The City Council can also ask follow-up questions to the responses that the candidate provided in their application. The City Council shall hear from members of the public after the City Council has asked all questions of the candidates. Then the City Council shall have the opportunity to discuss and deliberate the candidates. Following the conclusion of all of the interviews, I will hand out ballots to each of the City Councilmembers. I will ask the members of City Council that are in person to fill in their name on a ballot card and circle one nomination for appointment to the District Five City Council seat. For the Mayor and Vice Mayor, I will ask that you email me your nomination. I will collect the ballots and nominations and display the nominations on the screen and read into the record. The candidate with the most nominations will be brought up for a motion. A motion to appoint must be supported by a majority of the City Council in order for an appointment to be made. If no candidate receives more nominations than any other candidate, any City Councilmember may move to appoint one of the candidates. If that motion fails, I will ask the City Council on a new ballot to circle one nomination for an appointment to the District Five and repeat the steps until a motion, second, a majority vote in favor of one candidate is completed. Should the City Council defer the appointment of a District Five City Councilmember, by vote of the City Council, shall continue this agenda item to a date certain. Potential meeting dates are Thursday, December 22nd at 6:00 PM, which could be a hybrid meeting; Friday, December 23rd at 6:00 PM as a virtual only; Monday, December 26th at 6:00 PM as a virtual only meeting; or Tuesday, December 27th at 6:00 PM, virtual only. That does conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any clarifying questions before we go to the random selection of candidate interviews.
Sorry, Councilmember Taylor, I mean Vice Mayor Taylor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Mueller.
So is there any discussion? I may have missed it, but is there discussion before the nominations?
Let me go back to, so the interview will happen before the nominations, and it is during kind of that interview process that the City Council will have the opportunity to discuss and deliberate the candidates, and that does come before the appointment or nomination period.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Are there any other clarifying questions before we go to the random drawing? City Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So as part of discussing and deliberating the candidates, is it possible to ask questions back to the candidates for anything clarifying?
So that should happen during the interview. So after the candidate introduces themselves with their up to five minutes, the City Council can then either ask questions from the questionnaire or any follow-up questions of each candidate. So the process will be whoever the first candidate is, they'll come up, they'll have their five minutes, and then we open it up to the actual interview where the City Council, again, can either ask questionnaire questions or follow up to the questionnaire. And then once that interview is concluded, we go to the next candidate, who will give their five-minute intro and then proceed to their interview.
So if any questions come up during the discussion, is it possible to ask questions at that time?
I see what you're saying. I may have to defer to our city attorney, because I'm not sure if that's expressly laid out in the resolution.
That, that is not expressly laid out in the resolution, as you just mentioned, Ms. Herron, but I think that that would be acceptable if additional clarifying questions are required during the deliberation. I, I would recommend that, to the extent possible, the council limit their questioning to the interview portion, so that we more closely adhere to the resolution on process that the council adopted, but, but a slight deviation should not be problematic.
Thank you.
Ms. Herron, I have a question. Did we establish a time? So we, it's five minutes for the candidates to introduce themselves. How much time do, does the council have to do the interview afterwards?
So there was no predetermined, established time for the length of each individual interview? I think that one might depend on the follow-up questions that maybe the council has based on the questionnaire that the candidate has already completed in their application.
Thank you. I just have a follow-up question for council. Is anyone interested in establishing a time considering how many candidates we have?
I mean, I would be supportive of that, though. I think we would have to give each candidate the ability to cycle through like a full set of questions, right? Like so, because we couldn't have a scenario where one candidate only answered questions from three council members. Correct me if I'm wrong. So even if that like hit that time, so I'm totally, you know, supportive of the idea of some, some time limit, but, but I, I would think that we would have to make sure that like, like all, like all candidates got, got a chance to answer all of the same questions, or if that's not the case, someone can correct me and say we don't, we don't have to follow that, that, that rule, but, but that would be my, my only concern. I think we can certainly express to, to the candidates that, you know, sometimes brevity and efficiency is, is as impactful as, as, you know, longer answers.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Back to you, Judy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just to kind of follow up on Councilmember Combs' questioner, maybe it was more of a statement about just kind of standardized. So the questionnaire questions are definitely standardized. They've already been asked of each of the applicants, and so City Council can reuse those 10 questions. I'd be happy to display them. And then when it comes to the follow-up questions, I don't believe you have to ask the same follow-up question to each of the candidates. So there is a little bit of flexibility there.
And so if I can, through, through the Vice Mayor, so like my understanding is that like each council member will like have one question that they pull from the pre-selected questions, and then, and then if they have a follow-up, then they can ask something that's not, not part of the pre-selected questions? Or is that, or are you saying like all of the questions we ask up here today are called follow-up questions?
So let me just pull up the resolution real quick. So the council can ask any of the questions from the questionnaire, which they've already have responded to. Where the flexibility comes in is that the City Council can ask follow-up questions. So my, I guess, safe answer would be is that yes, at this point, you can either re-ask the question that they've responded to on the application or just a follow-up to their response on the application.
Okay, totally, totally. Thanks for that clarification.
And through the Vice Mayor, I do agree with everything that, excuse me, Ms. Herron just said.
Okay, so with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, or through the Vice Mayor, I can begin the random drawing for candidate interviews.
Please begin, Ms. Herron.
Okay, so I have a really fun way of selecting the candidates for the order of interviews. As you can see here, I have all of the lists, or a list of all of the applicants. Currently, it is in just last name order, so I am going to do a quick little shuffle. Shuffle again. And we will go ahead and begin with the random draw. Okay, so the first candidate is going to be Mark Noble. I'm going to go ahead and you can stay seated. I'm going to do, we'll do the random draw for everyone right now. Right, so I've hid Mark Noble's name. We are spinning again for our next. Next will be Tom Fan. Now, Tom did let me know that they may not be able to attend this evening, so we will see when we get to Tom's appointment time if Tom is available. You guys are having so much fun. Yay, Picker Wheel. So our third will be Edward Sporn. Fourth interview. Will be Maria Dower. Next is Robin Glass. Paul Stedamayster. Catherine Carlton. Diana No. Next is Noria Zaslow. Followed by Nicole Chemney. And then our final interview of the evening will be Sally Cole. So thank you guys for that. Turning to my notes. Okay, so at this time, we will invite our first candidate up, Mark Noble. Mark, give me just one minute. Get our timer up and running. Okay, so Mark, whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Go ahead and start.
Well, I feel like I should buy a lottery ticket after this being the first one picked. So, but thank you. Nice to meet you all. Councilman Mueller, congratulations, and that was a very touching speech. Well done. Good luck with your new position. My name is Mark Noble. I have lived in Menlo Park. My current house in Sharon Heights, we've lived there for 23 years, and I've lived in other parts of the city for another five to seven, so almost 30 years. I'm married. My wife is here. Have two daughters. We raised them in Menlo Park. They went to Los Lomitas, La Entraida, and MA. Both went to Oregon. Go Ducks. Both have left the area because they can't afford to live here. So one moved to Denver and one moved to Portland. Very happy resident of the city. I have had a career in financial services of my whole professional career. Currently, I work for a bank, Silicon Valley Bank, and I'm a currency trader for them. Been there for about 15 years. My wife was an executive at Sun Microsystems before they went down the drain, but she's retired and is keeping busy. I have an interest in this position mainly because I care a lot about the city. I've been here so long. I've, I've seen it grow from, from what it was in the early 80s to now. Is that me? No, okay. I'm very new to city government. In fact, this would be my very first position, but I'm confident that I could pick it up and contribute in an effective way. What I do at work, I can translate, I think, to this job. I deal with very big numbers with very, with people with very big egos for work, and I handle that pretty well, I think. So I think my interpersonal skills with folks that have issues, I think I can look at both angles and hopefully give some good input. I want to congratulate my fellow candidates. I read through their dossiers and it's very impressive. Again, I'm a rookie at this, and when, I guess, I'm running out of time here, but I guess what interests me lately, other than seeing Mueller signs all over town, was the Measure V initiative, and being a homeowner in, in Menlo Park, I had a vested interest in that, and I know affordable housing is a major, major issue with not just Menlo Park, but with the county and the state. So I would like to, you know, get my arms around that kind of an initiative and hopefully add some value and hopefully come up with a solution. and hopefully come up with a solution. The other thing, before I ran out of time, that has interested me in this job is the elevated amount of crime that's been happening, especially even up in Sharon Heights. Sharon Heights has always been kind of a secret place. I've kind of felt like it's kind of isolated. And we've had a lot of break-ins and we've had a lot of vandalism. I'm not used to that. It's, it, it takes me back. I, I don't know what to do about it. And when we have to start locking our gates at night and keeping the lights on all night, there's something wrong. So I would like to address that too, if I was on the council. Other than that, I'm just appreciative of the opportunity to be here tonight and to experience what you guys do. And very impressive, and happy to be here.
Thank you, Mark. So with that, I am going to just display the questions that again have already been responded to, but are a part of the questionnaire. And then through the vice mayor, we can open it up for the actual interview of Mark.
Thank you, Ms. Herron, and at this time, I'd like to open it up to city council. For any follow-up questions for Mr. Noble?
This is true. I'll jump in, Cecilia, is that okay?
Yes.
Hey Drew, good to meet you, and again, thank you for applying. And your answer is you talk about the three issues that you think the city needs to address. You talked about the elevated crime, the affordable housing issue, and then downtown. So my follow-up question would be that, is there recent city action, recent action by the city council that you were supportive of? And that you thought was a good decision? And, and the flip side of that is, has there been recent city council action that you thought was the wrong decision or the wrong direction to go in?
Well, I didn't bring up the point of the, the traffic situation on El Camino. I know I would assume that the council was part of approving that development where the, where the car dealerships were. And I'm all about that. I think it's interesting and it's great, and it's taken a long time to get done, but I think COVID got in the way. But I worry about the traffic that's going to come when people start moving into those places. I don't know what the, I don't know what the allocation was for, you know, affordable housing in that situation. But that does concern me, and I'm sure it was a council decision for that to happen. So on one hand, I think it's a good thing because that area of El Camino needed development. But on the other hand, everybody's been on El Camino on a Friday at five o'clock and it's gridlocked, so I worry about that. But I guess you were part of the downtown situation with, with COVID and, and opening it up and creating new space on, on Santa Cruz. But it's created a little bit of, and I'm sure you guys brought that up and approved it, but it, it has created other issues to get around town. And it still kind of feels temporary. I think like Burlingame, for example, revitalized their downtown, put wider sidewalks. People could, could freely walk up and down and limited the parking. I think maybe eventually downtown Menlo Park should kind of follow suit on that. Does that answer your question? Again, I don't know what was approved by the city council, but those were some of the things. Those are just observations.
Are there any other?
Well done, Councilman Mueller. I'm not picking on you, I just.
I'll just respond. You're not picking on us. So, so all of that, you're right, all of that's kind of in the in-between stage. It's done under an emergency order through the governor, so it's something, it's an issue that the council will be taking up.
Right, okay.
And, and don't, we don't worry about, and to you and to everyone, don't worry about being candid at all. Please be candid.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Noble. Are there any other questions from council for this candidate?
Through the vice mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Given your discussion about downtown and the traffic on El Camino, how would you approach that with residents? How would you go about doing outreach? How would you go about coming to? Your thoughts about it, a consensus? How do you, how do you address an issue like that?
The excessive traffic?
Any issue, but yes, let's take the excessive traffic on El Camino.
That's a tough one. I, that's a tough one. I mean, I, I'm.
I'm talking about how would you approach it? Because yes, it's very tough.
I guess, I guess, and again, I apologize if I'm a little bit ignorant on the council past, but have you had special meetings to address it with the public? And what was the response?
So I guess what I'm looking for is how, as a council member, how would you reflect the desires of your, of District Five and of the city? Citywide, and how would you go about gathering information in preparing for a council meeting, for example, on that topic or any topic?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think what I would probably do is, is identify the areas that are mostly impacted and, and reach out to folks in those areas, either personally through door, not door-to-door, but try to create some meetings in those neighborhoods and get the input from what is frustrating people. Try to give an impartial view of what the city is trying to accomplish. And then call for a meeting, a citywide meeting, to try to, you know, work through those issues. I guess that's what I would do. Try to be prepared.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from the city council? Well, Mr. Noble, I have a question, and that is, what is your understanding of the Brown Act?
Don't know what it is, sorry.
Okay, I have a follow-up question. Have you engaged in any city council meetings in the past 12 months, or at least attended any council meetings?
Not in the last 12 months, but my daughters were part of the Solo Swim Club for 10 years. And that kind of competed with the swim club at Burgess. And then when the pool was built or rebuilt, there was a contract dispute with Sheeper, I believe, Sheeper Swimming and Solo. And I was here speaking up for Solo. So that's really the only other time I've been here. But that was quite contentious. I mean, that was a little bit ugly. But, but it turned out okay for both sides, I guess. That's the only time I've ever actually been here.
Thank you. And, and I have one other brief question, and that is, what is your understanding of the city's priorities?
Limited. Maybe you could educate me.
Thank you. Well, one, one big one is the, the housing element.
Oh. Okay, and what, what, and what's your question?
So, so my, my question was, what is your understanding of the city's priorities?
Well, if it's in the housing area, I would assume the city is attempting to find a location to build low-cost, or sorry, affordable housing for folks that need it as a priority, I, I would assume.
Yes.
And that's what, I guess, that's what the Measure V initiative was kind of encompassing too. Whether the council will make those decisions, or the voters will make those decisions.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure. Probably wasn't a very good answer, sorry.
You did well, Mr. Noble, and Mayor Willison has a question.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. I just wanted to, to thank the, the candidate, Mr. Noble. And I just wanted to say upfront that I'm not going to be able to ask follow-up questions, but I appreciate my colleagues' questions. And I'll be following along very closely on, on their answers, so I just wanted to say that it wasn't for lack of interest. I, but I appreciate all of your efforts tonight. Thank you.
No worries. You don't sound very well, so get well. I just want to say one last thing, if you don't mind. I really love this city. I've been here most of my adult life. I've raised my family here. I'm winding down my career. I still am working. I know that there's a commitment to this job and I, I'm on board with it, no worries. But I love this city. I've been here so long, and I want to, the city's given a lot to me. And I want to give something to the city. That's the main reason I'm here.
Vice Mayor Taylor, would it be okay if I asked a question?
Yes.
Uh-oh.
No. So my question is, you've talked about things you want to fix and the duties and everything, but my question is, what are the things that you think improvements that could be made to the city? If you had a, if you're like, oh, the city, would be great if the city had this.
I guess more programs for, for folks to participate in. I'll just bring up something my wife is doing in retirement. She goes to the Palo Alto Adult School and takes classes. I, I think it would be great if we did something like that in Menlo Park, where we had, you know, special kinds of classes to learn how to do things and, and enjoy hobbies like that. Woodworking, upholstery, that kind of thing. We don't have that here in, in Menlo Park. Every, all, all the programs that Menlo Park has, has offered, from the, the street fair to concert to various, various other things and through the schools are top rate. And every time we go to a function that the city has kind of sponsored or overseen, it's just done very professionally, and I'm, I'm always impressed with that.
Thank you, Mr. Noble.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the council for Mr. Noble? No, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for applying. Ms. Herron, back to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So our next candidate again is Tom Fan. Tom, if you are in our virtual audience, if you can please raise that hand. As I did mention earlier, Tom did let me know he probably was unable to attend. But I wanted to give this opportunity in case something changed. Okay, so I do not have Tom in the audience. The city council, I would just like to clarify that Tom did not withdraw the application. It still does want to be considered, just was unable to attend the interview this evening. So with that, we will go to our next candidate, Edward Score.
Hi, I'm Ed Shore. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I have to say, after listening to the proclamation and all Mr. Mueller has done, I was about to leave. I think those are huge shoes to fill, and, and I have, after that, a greater appreciation of what's entailed in the position, but feel motivated to, to move forward. I'm going to read my statement just because I didn't know how long it would take, and I didn't want to ramble.
Edward, can I ask, maybe turn the mic a little closer inward? We're kind of losing your audio.
Sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you, yes.
So again, thank you for the opportunity to, to apply for this position. My wife and I lived in Menlo Park in District Two for a few years, 30 years ago. Since then, have lived in four other cities, I think. But had the opportunity to move back here a dozen years ago and liked Menlo Park so well that we took up that opportunity when I was asked to lead the programmatic activities at the Lucille Packard Foundation for Children's Health. As I included in my application, by training, I'm a physician, a pediatrician, and a social scientist. I've held many positions during my career, including as a practicing pediatrician and a medical director of a managed care organization as an academic. I've been a foundation executive in three different national foundations. And I was a medical director and director of public policy for the Iowa Department of Public Health, so I've served in an unelected position in, in state government. All these positions required that I stay current on public policies, not only as they affected my work, but as they affected families and children in the populations and communities I served. In many of my capacities, I have successfully introduced programs and policies, both public and private, that have improved the care of children and families. Often, this has taken the form of creating new paradigms, new standards for healthcare systems and practitioners, and raising awareness where things have gone awry. I tend to see the unclosed emperor often. Most recently, I initiated a series of projects in California, whose goal it is to make it mandatory for state agencies to meaningful engage the constituencies they are intended to serve in advisory roles. Throughout my career, I have primarily considered myself an advocate for government to better serve its constituents. I've approached this role directly as a government employee and through advisory committee memberships, and indirectly through relationships with legislators and government employees. I believe that each citizen should look for ways to participate in government activities, both to understand the processes involved in governing, and to contribute to making government better meet the needs and expectations of the community. For me, the opportunity to serve on the city council is a way I can meet my obligations as a resident of the community. I should say, in anticipation of your questions, that I have not paid great attention to what's going on in government. I've been doing my job and being a member of my family. But I'm a good learner. I'm a very critical thinker. And it would be a real honor to be able to take this position.
Thank you, Edward. And at this time, we will return the meeting to the city council for questions.
Are there any follow-up questions for Mr. Shore from the city council?
Vice Mayor Taylor, this is Drew. I'll, I'll go. So, you know, similar to the, the question I had for, for the first candidate, is, has there been some city council action that you wouldn't, you were not supportive of? And has there been some city council action that you have been supportive of? Now, I will, since you said that you have not really followed the city, I'll take that into account and expand that to any government entity. So at state or, or the federal level, what has been a recent government action or by a government body that, that you supported and why? or by a government body that that you supported and why? And what was a recent action that that you didn't support and why?
So, um, for the last decade, I've been following mostly state and federal policies. I have been particularly involved with the Department of Healthcare Services in California as they have developed programs for children who have chronic health problems. That's been a particular focus of mine. They elected to move the care of those children from their Medicaid program to managed care. The the rationale for that was that the Department of Healthcare Services wanted to get out of the business of being a an insurer. They just wanted to be a financier. I don't think they did that well. I think the managed care companies were not prepared to take care of kids with complex and chronic healthcare needs. There is great variability in that, in their ability to do that. And unfortunately, that State Department has a history of not holding its contractees very accountable uh, to meet the contracts that they have negotiated. So I've not been very happy with that. I participated in the statewide advisory committee to the department and was vocal in both my my concerns, but also trying to suggest how they might go about doing better.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council?
Vice Mayor Taylor, I do have questions.
Yes.
Thank you. So I was, um, you said that you see unclothed emperors. How do you approach the organization when you see an unclothed emperor? And can you give us a brief example of when you approached them and when it worked and when you weren't as satisfied with the answer?
Well, what I try to do is see if there's consensus support from my observation. Because often, uh, you know, often I'm wrong, you know, probably wrong half the time. I'm just never sure which half it is to start. But finding consensus from people often does that. Some years ago, I was charged with improving the practice of pediatrics as it related to children's development. And what I observed was that by and large pediatricians were doing a horrible job of identifying children who had developmental problems. And that plays out in the education system later on and all sorts of consequences. So, uh, I raised that. We looked for data to support that, and there was data. Uh, and using that data, I then went to organizations that work with state Medicaid programs and had them work toward developing policies that required that pediatricians use standardized screening for assessing every child's development. At that time, probably ten percent of visits that happened. Today, we're above sixty percent. Now that's taken almost twenty years. So I learned to be patient in this process, but but that's it. Find a problem, document it, get consensus on that it exists, and then can get consensus on how things should be. So here's where we are, here's where we should be. And then the question is, okay, what actions can we take that'll get us from where we are to where we should be? And that's where I've been putting my effort.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Taylor, I can I can go.
Thank you.
So I would just ask the same question I asked last time. So what improvements do you, would you, could you foresee making to our city? Not necessarily fixing something, but if you had a vision for the city in the future, what would you add to it?
Kind of as Mr. Noble had said, I think, I have some of the same thoughts and it comes partly from having lived in lots of different places. I would love to see a greater sense of community, a greater, you and your your points talked about, you know, people are really engaged and so on, but they, I'm not sure they're engaged with one another. And I feel like that's missing, and I think that's something that City Council and the the Office of the City Manager could do more with. That looking for ways of getting people together, communicating better, I don't think, I mean, you know, I've just been sitting out in the community. I don't think city government has done a great job of communicating what city government does or is planning of doing. But now, I I'm sure you have your processes, but from where I sat, we could, you could do a lot more of keeping people informed, keeping people engaged, and then moving toward a greater sense of community and more community activities, community ownership. You know, the the crime thing came up. Uh, you know, there are communities that have Community Watch, which doesn't involve much except keeping an eye out on your window, out of your window and and letting the police know if something looks suspicious. So I think that, in a large sense, is what I'd like to see happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shore, and I have two questions. One is, do you have any understanding of the Brown Act?
No. Well, I don't know what the Brown Act is, so if you can tell me what it was, I can tell you whether I understand it or not.
Okay, there are rules that are not by name. Okay, there there are rules for how our our meetings are governed and how City Council members are supposed to interact with one another. If you're selected, you will definitely have Brown Act training. And my other question is, what's your understanding of the city's priorities?
Well, I think they're, you know, probably the same as I listed because I think they're, you know, there are there are housing issues, there's traffic issues, there is environmental issues, there's crime issues. You know, I, those are also not necessarily unique to Menlo Park. And one of my answers to one of the questions was, and it sounds like Mr. Miller has already done a lot of this, is that this can't be, take, most of the solutions are not ones that Menlo Park can find on its own. They have to be intergovernmental activities with neighboring communities and with the county and with the state.
Thank you. At this time, I don't have any additional questions. Um, one last call for my council colleagues. Are there any other questions for Mr. Shore?
No, there are not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, back to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Edward. So our next candidate will be Maria Dohr. Perfect. Thank you, Maria, for raising your hand. I'm going to go ahead and promote you. So you should be able to engage your webcam and microphone.
Perfect. Hello.
Great. Thank you so much. And Maria, whenever you're ready, you can start.
Great, thank you. Dear City Council members, city staff, and fellow residents of Menlo Park, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Maria Dohr, and it would be a great honor to serve as council member for District Five. And I wish I could be with you there in person today, but extenuating family situations require me to be away at the moment. At twenty-seven years old, I've had close ties, I have close ties to community members that are part of a younger generation of Menlo Park. Those that are earlier in their career in Silicon Valley, those that are in graduate school or doing research at Stanford University, my alma mater, or those who are deciding now what Menlo Park will mean to them in their futures. I'm excited to bring new energy and perspective to citywide happenings to help us ensure that the city is heading in a direction that its future, as well as present, leaders are excited about. I'm excited to expand civic engagement with a younger generation, building off the great work of the Youth Advisory Committee, and create moments of connection for residents to celebrate and enjoy our city together. Along with my connection to younger generations of Menlo Park, I also have relevant experience with government, with collaborative efforts, and with urban design that will be essential in the City Council. I've helped facilitate public hearings across the state on the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant Program with the Strategic Growth Council. And I've helped federal and local agencies here in California and internationally build equitable community engagement practices, so community voices are more represented in decisions. My work as a strategy and management consultant requires attuned listening, a ability to work and connect with a wide array of stakeholders, and strategic thinking to help prioritize between a lot of different competing needs. I know that these are skills that will help me effectively serve on City Council as well as help me create solutions that benefit all Menlo Park residents, such as affordable housing measures that are good for existing residents while creating much-needed housing for new residents. I studied civil and environmental engineering at Stanford, and I can bring a technical understanding and practical lens to solutions for our built urban environment. I'm thinking about opportunities for building electrification, for climate adaptation for Bay adjacent neighborhoods, uh, and opportunities to reduce traffic congestion and improve air quality. Since I've moved back to Menlo Park, I've loved getting to meet neighbors in my District Five and being an active member of the community. I'm active with the Menlo Park Climate Team, the Rosalie Rondu Center, where I'm an English tutor. I attend City Council meetings, Environmental Quality Commission meetings, the San Mateo Climate Summit that happened for the first time earlier this year. And I've had the chance to meet with a lot of civic leaders, including those that work at CRC, La Esther Casa, and Menlo Spark. In addition to being a younger, uh, younger person in the younger generation and offering relevant work experiences, my personal background allowed me to connect with and bridge between many different groups of people who live in my district and across Menlo Park. I grew up low-income in a single-mother household and went to Stanford University on a scholarship. I'll just say that, no, I am not Mary Dohr, and John Dohr is not my father. According to the new environmental justice element, Sharon Hypes received sixty-nine points out of a hundred on the Housing Burden Low-Income Household ranking, which is twenty-eight percent or twenty-eight points higher than the city average. And I can uniquely understand the experience of coming from a low-income background, and I too currently am a renter in Menlo Park. In addition, over the last nine years, I've gotten to live and work in Latin America, in India, and I have a act local, think global mindset, and I speak Spanish, which I think is important, seeing as fifteen percent of Menlo Park residents speak Spanish. I've been connected to Menlo Park for over five years, and I am committed to my community. Menlo Park was central to my experiences in undergrad. I would bike down San Mateo Road and Middle Middle Avenue to go to Stax, the Shook Singaporean restaurants, local thrift stores and cafes. Menlo Park has been a place of opportunity for me, a place of incredible natural beauty and a diverse and vibrant community that I would be so excited to serve as your next council member. Thank you so much, Councilmember Mueller, for your leadership, and I'm so grateful for the work you will lead us in as supervisor. You've left really big shoes to fill, and I thank you all for your time and your consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. So I will be bringing the questions back up and opening it up to City Council questions.
Vice Mayor Taylor, I will, we're falling into a pattern here. Um, so, Maria, thank you for for applying and and for your statement. And you offer me the hope of no longer being the youngest person on on council, so that that is a very exciting proposition to me. Um, the question to you that that I have posed to the other candidates, has there been a recent council action that you were supportive of? And again, the same question, or the other side of that coin. Has there been a recent council action that that you found yourself disagreeing with and and why?
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Yes, I've been really excited to see the work with Willow Village with Meta and the concessions that the City Council requested to ensure that there are even more homes built for community members, that they use lowest emission construction equipment in that construction, and that they also fast-tracked the building of the grocery store. Because, you know, especially for the community of Bellhaven, I think having more access to affordable housing, more access to fresh food and fresh produce is essential. And I was really excited to see the the strong support from the City Council to move things forward on that, on that construction. An area of opportunity that I know of is in October, I know that a plan was tabled to remove parking on Middle Avenue for, that was proposed to increase bike safety. And it seems that this was due in part to limited outreach and that, and there's an opportunity moving forward to further evaluate the parking needs along Middle Avenue and bring folks into the conversation to to reassess if there are opportunities to improve bike safety, to improve pedestrian safety by removing that parking and finding parking in other spaces. And so that's an area of opportunity, one of the areas I'm thinking about. Thank you.
I just have to add, changing that to opportunity, already talking like a politician, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Are there any? Are there any follow-up questions by any other council members?
Vice Mayor Taylor, I do have follow-up questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Dohr, could you explain how you would go about doing outreach for the Middle Avenue project that you just discussed?
Thank you so much. I'm, uh, Councilmember Nash. When I think about outreach, you know, in my work with Santa Clarita Valley Water Agency with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, I had to help think, people think about how do we build effective and inclusive community outreach and communication strategies? So I'm thinking of, uh, one, seeing who who are folks connected? Who are the leaders along Middle Avenue, the business leaders as well as residential leaders? Um, and finding organizations that are associated with that area to do direct outreach with. I'm thinking also, you know, to do an initial assessment of areas of opportunity. I'm thinking about also how to get the word out, if we want to hold public meetings, uh, making sure that we we get the word out as many ways as possible. It's on on our website. It's on flyers around the neighborhood that we go individually to door-to-door. Maybe we're hanging up a small flyer uh, so people know about a public meeting that they can attend and comments that they can give through an asynchronous survey or through that public, uh, live event to talk about their visions for a livable, walkable, safe city. Um, and then I'd hold those meetings and then share back the feedback we heard and try to work with those teams to figure out how we should move forward. So, uh, my my suggestion, uh, in conclusion is do direct outreach with people who are there. Uh, make sure that a lot of people know about opportunities to give feedback and then report back and share what that feedback was, in case there are others that weren't able to be involved in earlier decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it's my turn. Ms. Dohr, same question to you that I've asked the the other applicants. And you have fresh eyes, so you've been here five years. Uh, what improvements do you think can be made to the city? What are we missing?
Thank you so much, Supervisor Mueller. Um, opportunities for the city that I'm thinking about, there are three especially, uh, that are moving forward that I'm excited to support. One is thinking about how we are growing in the housing that is coming. We know that, you know, through the state requirements, affordable housing will be increasing and making sure that we're doing this in a way that is equitable, that reflects the priorities of communities in in different districts and is beneficial not just for individual districts, but for the city as a whole is really important to me. And making sure that we are prepared for that growth. So thinking about the other public services we need to make sure are ready to support community members as our our city continues to grow. So access to green space, access to grocery stores and services that are important. And so making sure all that is, uh, in a package as we think about our growth. I'm also excited for action with the Climate Action Plan, thinking about how can we ensure for climate adaptation? How can we address disparate, uh, air pollution that's affecting districts in a different way? And how can we advance building electrification are the three things I'm most excited for with the Climate Action Plan? And then lastly, um, you know, with my experiences and the things I love most, um, moments of of moments of engaging community and creating connection for community, some moments for celebration where we can gather together, build understanding between different districts to remember that we are one city as a whole and create and foster dialogue is something of interest to me. There's a model called America in One Room that's a deliberative democracy process that I think is a really interesting model. And it's the idea of, it's the idea of bringing a lot of people, different people together to have dialogue with one another about their visions of the futures that they want for their community. And I think activities around something like that, Menlo Park in One Room, could be an interesting thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. And I have two questions. One is, what is your understanding of the Brown Act?
Yes, the Brown Act is meant to help increase the flexibility, transparency and accessibility of public meetings for the public to participate and understand what's going on with local governments. And I know that there is a new requirements that are coming down starting January first. And those new requirements will increase or adjust how public meeting online options are as well as allowing disruptive conduct to be handled more effectively in local government meetings. And those two areas sound like an important way to continue growing. And I think that as those adjustments come down, ensuring that we are being and striving to be as accessible as possible, as inclusive as possible. So as many residents can participate in decisions that affect them, the better. And so that's some initial thoughts.
Thank you. And actually have a follow-up question. You said earlier that you, that you spoke Spanish.
I do.
And have you had any understanding of the Brown Act in Spanish? Or has it only been in English?
My interaction with the Brown Act is only in English, but I would be very excited to learn more. I recently, I'm currently working on a project with a team in Chile. And so I'm speaking Spanish and working in Spanish on a weekly basis. And so feel very comfortable if there's an opportunity to help make sure that these meetings and other meetings are even more accessible to folks. That's a thing I'm very excited for.
Thank you. And my last question, as I asked the previous candidates, and that is, what is your understanding of the city's priorities?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Taylor. You know, the city priorities that I've seen are, one, working to help get that housing element finished and turned in in January and begin to live into that vision for affordable housing and growth in our city. It's, I see the team, the City Council, thinking about the Climate Action Plan and how that comes through, especially within there with the building electrification, the work with block power and the four-point-five-million-dollar grant that we have to support building electrification and retrofits, especially in our low-income communities of color is really exciting to me. And then I also know that there are other opportunities with traffic and congestion. Traffic is an issue with the walkability and livability of our city. It also creates disparate air pollution impacts. And so I see that as also a priority that the Safe Streets Commission and others are working on that I'd be excited to support as council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. And at this time, I do not have any other questions. Wanted to follow up with my council colleagues to see if there were any additional questions at the dais.
No, there are not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herring. Back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Maria. Maria, I'm going to go ahead and change your role back to attendee. Feel free to hang out. And our next applicant is going to be Robin Glass. Thank you, Robin. I'll go ahead and promote you now so you can engage your webcam and microphone.
Hi there. It's a pleasure to see all of you today. Thank you very much for having me and good evening. I'm Robin Glass. I'm a resident here in District Five of Menlo Park and I'm truly honored to have the chance to be with you all today. It was really inspiring getting to hear the opening with Councilmember Mueller talking about his experience and hearing everybody's reflections on his service. So thank you for all that you've done and I wish you the best of luck in your new capacity. It's also just incredibly inspiring to hear from and read the applications of the other candidates. When I submitted mine, I honestly didn't know what the turnout would be. And as I read through everyone's applications, I just felt really excited for the city of Menlo Park and also for democracy, which feels to be very much on display tonight. So I will tell you just a little bit about myself. I'll try and be brief because I know this is shaping up to be a long night. But I am a mother of three children, all who are attending public schools in Menlo Park, both Oak Knoll and two at Hillview. I'm also the daughter of a couple of other local residents. My parents live in Palo Alto but have been able to utilize some of the local services like the Rosner House. And so I sort of come at this work as a caregiver, both as a parent and as the daughter of aging parents. And so really appreciate the services that are offered through the community. My whole career, both my educational and my professional career is really at the intersection of public policy and business. And so I went to Duke for undergrad. My first job was actually a part-time job at SRI, looking at education policy. I worked at one of the local elementary schools as a summer intern, helping to bring healthcare services on campus to local elementary. And then went on to a career in health policy and business and have worked both in nonprofits, for-profits and consulting with state, local and national organizations in healthcare. And so my passion here is just really around public service and about looking at the ways that government and business can come together to form unique and powerful solutions for our communities. I think that currently I'm the president of a virtual care company. So I'm very involved in figuring out how we get access to healthcare to more and more Americans, which I know isn't necessarily within the jurisdiction of local government as much. But it does present me with an opportunity to really think about social impact and how to serve the most people for the greatest good on a day-to-day basis. And I guess when I think about the skills that I would bring to this role, I think the three that come to mind most immediately are, first of all, listening. I think if you were to ask any of my colleagues, they would tell you that I have a really acute ability to listen and to really hear where people are coming from and draw out solutions from their ideas. And so that's something I'd bring to the role. I think I also operate in complexity and ambiguity well. And what I see here is a situation where there is a lot of that, where there are tough trade-off decisions to be made at every step. And so not seeing things as simple solutions, but really looking for how to get to the very best answer. And then also around collaboration and communication. And I think I have an ability to bring ideas forward in a way that has a lot of purpose and allows people to understand why we're doing what we're doing, which I think is really essential to the role. So I will close there in the spirit of time and just thank you all very, very much for the opportunity to be considered.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, so turning it back over to the City Council for questionnaire questions and follow-up.
Ms. Glass, Drew Combs. A question I'll pose to you, the same question I've posed to all the prior candidates. What's been a recent City Council action that you were supportive of? And has there been a recent City Council action that you were not supportive of and the reasoning behind those positions?
Yeah, if it's okay with you, Councilmember, I'll take your option that you offered earlier to sort of broaden my answer a little bit. And just say that one of the areas that I am most excited about is the work going on with the housing element and the idea of creating more affordable housing within Menlo Park. I see it as one of the most challenging issues that we face as a community. And honestly, I think there is a real opportunity for us to bring the resources and the sort of collective sense of purpose that we have as a community to do a lot better in that area. And so I'm really inspired by the leadership that I believe this City Council is showing in that regard. And I guess I'll go perhaps a little further in history to talk about what I don't agree with or I'm not proud of. And I think that, you know, obviously goes way, way back but is still present with us in some sense today. And that has to do with the history of redlining that is a part of Menlo Park's history. And I think, you know, obviously if you go many decades back, you can see sort of the intentionality with which some of those policies were implemented. Then, you know, moving more toward the present time, I think there are people, you know, well-intentioned people who have set policies that inadvertently or maybe in some cases intentionally continue to perpetuate some of those inequalities. And so that would be something that I would be looking very closely at examining, of course, the obvious instances of that, but also looking under the surface, the surface to be sure that the policies that we believe are a good idea are actually equitable at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Hello, Mrs. Glass. I have a question again about outreach and I'm pleased to hear that you consider listening and drawing solutions with others. How do you, how would you go about that as a City Council member?
Yeah, I'll just say I was super impressed by Maria's answer to this question. She had a lot of really great ideas about how to elicit feedback from the community. And so I think I would absolutely be employing a lot of similar tactics of doing outreach in multiple modalities. Because one thing that I'm very aware of, given my profession, is just that different people like to engage in different ways. Some people will show up in person to a meeting, some people are going to want to do something online. And so making sure that we're using various modalities and a really inclusive approach, I think, is really, really important. I also like the idea of thinking about key stakeholders and really understanding at the grassroots level what individuals feel, but also looking at some of the larger sort of organizations and entities within a community to understand their perspectives as well. I think a couple of things that I might add that wouldn't necessarily be as obvious is I believe in the power of data and I believe in the idea that we can also take really valuable inputs as we're designing policy by looking at data. So really, for example, if we're looking at, you know, transportation dynamics, really bringing to bear some of the data on how traffic patterns are actually operating on a day-to-day basis and things like that. And so that would be another thing that I would consider. And then lastly, I would say, we don't have to invent all the great ideas right here in Menlo Park. There are many, many municipalities and other governments that have struggled with some of the exact same issues that we have. And so I would be looking at best practices and calling upon other communities who have found innovative solutions that are actually working and figuring out sort of how we can import some of those ideas into Menlo Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my question to you, same as to the past applicants. And I mean, preface it beyond affordable housing and the other items that you've already mentioned. What improvements do you think can be made to the city of Menlo Park? And not necessarily fixing something, but, but like any improvement?
Yeah, I think that the idea that gets me really excited on this front is the notion of being a real leader on climate. And the notion that here we are in the heart of Silicon Valley where there is so much innovation going on. And we are, you know, on a relative basis, a resource-rich environment just in terms of what I think this community can do. And I'd love for us to be yet stronger as a leader on environmentalism and have that show up in the way that we're thinking about the use of energy in this community, the way we're thinking about recycling and composting and just a myriad of solutions out there where I think we could be one of those cities throughout the country that's really looked upon as cutting-edge in this area. And I think that it could also serve as a really great source of economic development for our community as well. I believe in the connection between the environment and the opportunity to attract great businesses and to create jobs and the like. And so I think that's a place where I could see us leading even more strongly going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glass. And I have two questions. The first is, what is your understanding of the Brown Act?
Yeah, I'll be honest, I've gotten most of my education on the Brown Act today. And my understanding, as I think you have described, is that it plays a very important role in California policy in ensuring that the public has an opportunity to participate in the process and also defining some of the standards for how that process works in terms of how, you know, members of government interact both with one another as well as the public. So that's my understanding today.
Thank you. And my last question is, what's your understanding of the city's priorities?
You know, my understanding is largely based off of looking at what we have focused on in City Council meetings, what some of the representatives from City Council and our newly-elected mayor have spoken of. And so my understanding is that I think affordable housing is very high on the list. It seems like a place where you all have spent a lot of energy and a place where there's quite a lot of discourse going on within the city, which I think is great. I've also seen that the environment and how we are being good stewards of the environment is a high priority. It seems to me, based on what I've read, that the, the way that we handle downtown going forward is a really important topic. And obviously, we've set up a lot of new innovation in downtown as a result of the pandemic. But deciding sort of what is the long-term strategy there feels like a, an important priority. And then just a focus on the community and how to bring the community together in new and meaningful ways is another theme that I've seen run through a number of the things that I've read.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just a follow-up to my City Council colleagues, are there any other questions for Ms. Glass?
I do not have any follow-up questions. I would like to request a five-minute break.
Yes, definitely. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Glass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. I'm going to go ahead and put you back to the attendee list and feel free to hang around. Okay, and then through the Vice Mayor, did we want to take a brief recess?
Yes, please.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, Vice Mayor and Mayor. We've got our city council back in person at the dais and our virtual dais is ready. So with that, Vice Mayor, if you'd like, I can call the next candidate up.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So our next candidate will be Paul Stedemeister.
Hello. Hello, everyone. It's nice, nice to see all of you and to meet you for the first time here. Yes, I'm Paul Stedemeister, and I live in Sharon Heights. On Sharon Park Drive, and I've lived in Sharon Heights continuously since late 1990s, 1998 or so. So I've lived here a long, a long time. I have, I have a degree, a bachelor's degree from the University of California at Berkeley. And then I have a doctorate degree from the University of Western Ontario in Canada in geology. And over the last 20 years, I've been working as a consultant for various environmental and engineering consulting firms, working on environmental compliance, for the most part, and some engineering aspects too. Working with the owners, developers, agencies, also with agencies, of course. And and engaged in side assessments, investigations of properties, cleanup of properties, and also in the development of plans, environmental plans, multitude of environmental plans required by state and federal regulations, in some cases county regulations. And in addition, over the last 20 years, I've also been president of a homeowners association, basically a condominium complex, 120 units that has a homeowners association. Basically handling the day-to-day operations and planning and budgeting and those kind of things. And so so I'm very interested in getting a position here with with the city and be able to to work with my colleagues and other city, city, city employees to to continue to make Menlo Park a great city to live in.
Thank you, Paul.
All right.
All right. So with that, I will bring the questions back on the screen and open it up to the city council for questions and follow-up.
Cool. I think you do the the vice mayor, I'll time in with the first question. And again, my question is, has there been a recent city council action that you were supportive of? And if so, why? And and again, also, has there been a recent city council action that you disagreed with and why? And if and if, again, as I have offered other candidates, the preferences to broaden that to other government entities are levels, then then that's totally fine with me.
Well, I've been, I've been very positive in terms of the the safety precautions and the accessibility of some of our roads for bicycles. In other words, the installation of those green bike lanes. So that's, I think that was, that's very positive. It that, of course, brings a some, some difficulties or future difficulties, but that was a good plan because there's more and more demand by pedestrians and people on bicycles to to use our roads. Yes. So I think that's a very good one. In terms of a negative, well, you, you're, the city is, is is limited, has to comply with certain state laws. So you have to comply. So I'm not a great advocate or advocate of the affordability housing measures that the state of California is requiring. But I understand you have to comply with what those requirements are. Same with the climate change. I'm not fanatic about that either. I think there's a lot of exaggeration in that. But again, you, you have, we have laws we have to follow, and they've been state laws as well as federal laws. So we have to comply with those.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
How would you go about doing outreach with the residents in District Five?
Oh, outreach. Well, outreach nowadays, I would use a multi-phase. First of all, I would consult with other city agencies, well, with the city mental park and other departments that have done outreach before. And and come to a plan as to, you know, what, what have they learned that works and what doesn't work? So develop a plan. What is the outreach plan? How are you, how are we going to implement this plan? And so my understanding of situations in modern day, modern day Menlo Park is you, I think you would need person-to-person outreach. Now, does that mean walking, knocking at everybody's door? I don't think so. You could have like booths and shopping centers and so on. Then there's radio announcements.
Actually, can let me fine tune this a little bit. How would you, as a, as the council member for your district, do outreach?
Oh, me, me personally.
Please.
Well, I would participate in this, this outreach plan in my district, yeah, by perhaps, well, talking, obviously talking to residents there. Perhaps with a table or a booth at the shopping centers in in that district. I would try to get more volunteer volunteers to join me, and so we could spread the word and have some type of a schedule as to what we we like to attempt and and somehow have metrics to support that. And be able to to revise it as needed. Badgers would be involved, personally involved, or maybe even lead, lead the outreach. Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, Paul.
Hello.
Hi. So I have a, I have a question for you, and I think your answer is going to be different than others. So how would you improve Menlo Park? What would be the, if you were, if you were to look at it, what's, and this necessarily means fix something. What would you add to it?
To improve? Well, I would I would well, I, I think we need improvement in terms of addressing the criminality and and the homelessness that has increased over the last 10 years. So so, so in terms of the criminality that would involve a So, so, so in terms of the criminality, that would involve a, some kind of a police action of some type. Unfortunately. Resolution or, or reduction of criminality is a function also of the judicial system. And so if the judicial system is not working, is not in the control of the city mental park, then they become difficult. But so there would be something in terms of the, the police improvements and, or, or response. And I would make sure, I would also try to go back to the initial purpose of Menlo Park. What do we want Menlo Park to look like? Do we want Menlo Park to look like downtown San Francisco where there's no vegetation, everything's just pavement and buildings? Because there are forces out there that that's, that's where they're, they want us, they're driving towards that. Kind of almost like red parts of Redwood City. Or do we want Menlo Park the way it was conceived with the tree city? It's, 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 it has the emblem of a tree, something where there's vegetation, space, traffic under some, somewhat control. So that's what I would say, be careful of enacting laws or, or regulations that contradict that concept.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Studi Mider. I have two questions for you. One is, what is your understanding of the Brown Act?
The Brown Act is, is, is something that's been imposed on us. And it's basically a set of protocols. And that's about as far as I, I, my understanding of it. But if it affects the position I'm applying for, then I obviously would comply with, with the Brown, learn about the Brown Act and comply with those policies.
Thank you. And my last question is, what is your understanding of the city's priorities?
Well, I think the city's priorities, number one is to, to, to keep within budget. So on an annual basis, you obviously have a budget and you have to do all you can to stay within that budget. Operate within the budget. Also be responsive to, to the residents' complaints or calls or requests for information. So you need to be, have a good communication channels and have clarity, meaning that we don't have secret meetings. Everything, everything's out in the open. And, and, and also of course, okay, so the other thing is you have to make sure system, this, the, the system in the city, so we're talking about the infrastructure. Water, gas, electricity is all working properly. We don't have blackouts. Wherever there's a need for maintenance, it'd be, it'd be done. Make sure the garbage gets picked up and there's no obstructions to, to this. So in other words, you want to have services to be, be running properly. That's probably one of the number one reasons for having a city, a city separate from individuals. And of course, to follow the, the laws, rules and laws and all the governing policies and requirements. So you want people who, who will understand the rules and the laws and follow those laws. And then those that do not, then we have to have a swift way of addressing those type of issues.
Thank you, Mr. Studi Meister. Are there any additional questions from council? No, there are not. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paul. Appreciate your time. Our next candidate is going to be Catherine Carlton. So Kat, I will be promoting you now so you can engage your webcam and microphone. Great. So Kat, if you can try unmuting yourself just to see if we can hear you.
Sorry, rookie move. I'm, I'm sorry that I can't be there in person. I really wanted to be, but I'm sick and decided it was best not to come and spread germs to you all. So my apologies for not being there in person. A lot of you know me pretty well, so I thought I'd give you a little bit of background information in introducing myself. I have an MBA, International Business Experience. I've worked in the UK, Peru, ran a tech company in Hong Kong before I moved here about 20 years ago. I also speak Spanish, used to speak Mandarin Chinese, though it's really, really rusty now. I didn't know anyone when I moved here. I was kind of lonely, so I got involved volunteering in the community. I was an after-school tutor at the Boys and Girls Club, mentor at Hip Housing, Junior League, Vista Center for the Blind. And I learned that Mr. Menlo Park has so much to celebrate in terms of the programs that we have, its engaged people. It gave me a better understanding of the diversity of both the skills that people have in Menlo Park and the needs that our residents have. And I think it's really when I started to fall in love with this town. Long story short, I, I ended up writing legislation to fight human trafficking of, of children that passed into law for the state of California, got on Parks and Rec Commission and ended up on council. But currently, I run an impact hub called Sapiens and I advise business entrepreneurs. I understand the financial aspects that impact the city, the business environment. Numerous times, I've, I've literally gone from shop to shop with many of our small businesses, talking to them about the things that impact them. To, to better really understand what the issues are there. And also understanding and researching various smart city technologies and opportunities that we can leverage. I've raised and am raising their teenagers now, two children in Menlo Park. Volunteered extensively in the school district, which has given me a really deeper understanding of the youth and the family aspects of our city and our services. This is a fantastic town to raise children in. I was honored to be elected to City Council twice by the people of Menlo Park. And served as mayor pro tem, mayor of City Council. So at least I do bring a deep historical knowledge of the city and the programs and, and how we've ended up here in, in many ways. And things going on in the neighboring cities can and do affect Menlo Park. So during my time, I also served on and still serve on different county, state and federal committees and joint power authorities, which give me a better understanding of the systems that impact our community. We don't live in a bubble. There's so much that happens in Redwood City or Palo Alto or things that we do that affect the whole region. I was honored to and, and usually really enjoyed serving on City Council previously. It's a lot of work, but it's so rewarding. And I love this town. And would really like to continue to keep having the opportunity to represent the people in my area and the people of Menlo Park and help Menlo Park be the best that it can be. I would be genuinely honored to represent the people in my district again. And to contribute to an even more vibrant and livable Menlo Park. So thank you very much. Sorry.
All right. So I'm going to return it to our City Council for the questionnaire and follow-up.
Thank you, City Corr Karen, through the Vice Mayor. The question I would have is, what's a recent council action that you have been, that you supported and, and why? And what was a recent council action that you disagreed with and why?
Somebody, somebody told me one time, when there was a contentious issue, he said, I'm really kind of annoyed, but they're really kind of annoyed too. So I guess we've actually come to a, a good middle ground, a consensus. And I look at the housing element and that's just so difficult. It's, it's really stressful and there's so much work. There's so many moving parts and putting that together. And I think you guys, the council, as well as the residents that are helping with that, have done a really good job. I don't think there's a silver bullet that we all look at and say, wow, okay, great, that's perfect. But I think it's been handled thoughtfully and professionally. And I, I commend the process so far that has gone with that. Something I disagree with, you may laugh, but it's one of those little things that bugs me. The Fire Protection District have, for years, been trying to get everyone who does anything to their house to be forced to put in this large expensive sprinkler system that goes through the whole house. In most cases, you have to upgrade the, the water link to, to support it. When we looked at it years ago, it was like $30,000 to do it. Now that everything's so much more expensive after COVID, I'm sure it's infinitely more expensive. And as I, I saw that whole thing had been updated, it went from, it used to be if you were updating 75% of your house. Once you're at that expense, the extra expense hopefully wouldn't be preventative of, of someone being able to work on their house. That got lowered to 50%, which I think is sad in and of itself to exacerbate that. It includes all of the garage, if someone builds on top of the garage. And often, we're, we're trying really hard to get people to build ADUs and often people build ADUs on top of their garages. And I worry that it's a huge expense for people that want to fix up their house, lowering that bar. And also by lowering the bar and including the garage, potentially it could have the unintended consequence of convincing people not to put in that ADU in areas where it can't stand alone in the yard. And anyway, I think it's, it's an unintended consequence and I, I probably would not have supported that move, but you asked, so.
Hi, Kat. It's Betsy. Any thoughts for us as we look at these applications, as you reflect on your time on council? And I've actually had a bit of time away to look at things, either, I guess, either anything that we should know as far as your application goes, since I do believe we know you quite well? Or anything that you think would be helpful for us as, for the council to know, just insights that you have?
That's a really good question. When I stepped away from council, I purposely didn't keep attending every City Council member, every City Council meeting. Just to give space and respect for Jen, taking it, you know, and, and the other council members taking over. There, there's some people who leave council and, and don't necessarily let go. And I was surprised how even when I care, unless you're really reading the agendas, how things can happen that just slip your notice. And so when people talk about improving communications, I don't necessarily think that's broadcasting out everything, but finding ways to, to maybe better target communications to different groups that are impacting people. Sometimes we have a beautiful way of, of having great marketing names for programs and projects, like the beautiful Menlo, you know, project or, or whatever. And, and maybe it should be, we're thinking of doing this a little bit more blatant communication on exactly what the different projects are. I don't know. I think it's, it's a longer conversation than I'm going to answer in a couple of minutes here. But I, I did get to experience the difference between drinking the fire hose of information and having to actually hunt out information to make sure I was aware of things going on that might affect my area. And I think it comes down to being able to target the information because there's so much happening in the city. And so that was, it was an interesting switch to, to really see that side of the fence. I, I hope that, does that answer your question?
It does. It's very provocative. Thank you. Love to think about it some more.
Hi, Kat.
Hi.
So what improvements would you?
Excuse me. Improvement. Somebody, someone annoyingly used to tell us that you can do anything, you just can't do everything. And that kind of comes down to the fact that we have a limited amount of staff time to do everything. So we always have to have priority setting. We used to have it in January, February, where we sit down and we say, these are the main things we want to focus on. And on the macro level, really, that's continuing, continuing to improve Menlo Park's infrastructure. The environmental policies with infrastructure comes, you know, the, the safety, both homes and streets. Those policies we're still working on, I think in many ways we're on the right path, but we still have so, so far to go. On the, the micro level, I mentioned communications. I'd like to see us doing more programs and events and things to get people from all areas of Menlo Park together. And to celebrate the diversity that we have in Menlo Park. I mean, just off the top of my head, I haven't really thought this through, but you know, Cinco de Mayo celebration or, you know, something that gives different, different aspects, different people in Menlo Park a, a chance to shine and, and create more of a, a community in, in different fun ways for people. That's, you know, the, the answer to that question, there's this, a, as I said, a more detailed level, which would that, but, but on the, the grander level, I would, I would say we've, we still have work to do in our, our infrastructure and our environmental policies to particularly to meet the aggressive standards that we've set for ourselves.
Thank you. And apologies if my question seemed a little short. I paused to allow you time to cough and so I, I hope, no, no, I hope I, and I'm, I'm, I hope you get well soon.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kat. And I have the last two questions, which, one of which you actually answered part of it, so I'll start there. And, and that is, what is your understanding of the city's priorities?
The, the, the city priorities are, you know, around housing, they're around the environment, they're around transportation. But they're not really standalone priorities because what happens with housing and businesses affects traffic. What happens with the environment is impacted by traffic. It's, it's all beautifully and insidiously connected, which is great because if we, if we get all the pieces lined up correctly, they'll start supporting each other. Again, I, I, you know, this, the City Council come together and look at our budget and look at our staff and, and decide. And also, you know, listen to the residents and, and decide where we're using our, our staff time and money that year, what our priorities are. It's always very difficult. It's always very difficult because there's always more that we want to do than we can. But I, I think it does somewhat obviously focus around environmental issues, traffic and safety issues. And kind of zoning and infrastructure, I guess, for, for lack of a better kind of macro term.
Thank you. And my last question is the same that I gave all the other candidates. And that is, what is your understanding of the Brown Act?
The Brown Act is created to, as I understand it, it's created to prevent people from doing backroom deals. You have one person on council you can speak to about something, if you have a question or information. But you can't speak to more than that because you can't speak to a majority. You can't negotiate or share information that allows you to make a, a decision without doing it in public, on the dais or in a publicly noticed, you know, approved meeting setting. And that's, and that's sometimes tricky because you have to be careful that if you say something to the media, the media could publish it. And then it gets out to the others and, and you have to be careful with serial meetings with people. And then it gets out to the others and and you have to be careful with serial meetings with people. But it's, it's a good thing. It's good that we make our decisions and our discussions public. Sometimes, one of the, one of the things that I always worked really hard on is you do all, I mean, you know, you spend days reading, you know, all the packet and all the information and preparing for the city council meeting. But I was always tried to be careful to keep an open mind as well, because sometimes you get up there, you think you have all the information, but because of the Brown Act, one of your colleagues will come up with information that you, you didn't know previously, and you have to stop. And sometimes it really makes you reconsider all the information that you have. And and the same with residents can come up with information that you didn't have. So it makes things interesting, but it also makes things fair, that the residents and staff and council all get to have a clean, public, transparent conversation. And transparency in government is what breeds the the trust that we all need to to be able to function effectively.
Thank you. And at this time, I want to follow up with the council to see if there were any other questions for the candidate.
No, there are not.
All right. Thank you so much. And Ms. Heron, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kat. The changing your role to attendee, feel free to stick around. All right. And our next candidate is Diana Noe. I did receive a communication from Diana that they had to step away. And they did not think they'd be able to return, but I will do a call for Diana Noe in case you were able to return. And I do not see any hands or the name in the queue. So we will go to our next applicant, who is Noria Zaslow. And I will be promoting you now. Great. And Noria, if you can engage your webcam. We'll test your mic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Great. Thank you so much. You can go right ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. It's nice to meet you all. First of all, I would like to congratulate Mr. Mueller on his election. I have been a Menlo Park resident for the past thirty years. My husband is a physician who is retired. I live in District Five, and I've raised my daughters in the local elementary school, middle school, and high school. I am currently a disability advocate. I've been advocating on behalf of children with disabilities for the past twenty-five years. I applying for the position of city council because I'm very concerned about what happened to the city of Menlo Park since the COVID pandemic, especially regarding the safety. I understand the police sheriff suddenly resigned, and that's really a concern. I am also concerned about the traffic as well on El Camino. It doesn't look like it's increasing. But it's still looks like there is no improvement. I understand what the Brown Act is because I served on the Menlo Park City Recre- Parks and Recreation. And I served a term, and I was very happy to see that this department was really well managed. My daughters really benefited from the park and recreations. They took swimming lessons there. They took gymnastic lessons. I have no concern about the Menlo Park Recreation Department. What else can I tell you? Affordable housing. I understand that Meta, formerly Facebook, just got its project approved, and it looks like affordable housing is included in this project. I don't think affordable housing is a, is a very complex matter. I think with lots of work and and will, I think this, this problem could be solved very easily. Regarding the traffic, I think we have the technology and the science to solve that as well. I regarding priorities, finances, of course, balanced budget, the environment. I think we all want clean water, clean air. And zoning, zoning, I think, is an issue that should be addressed. And the way to to do it is to reach out to Menlo Park residents, and the way to do it is just to knock on doors or attend block parties. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer your questions now.
Thank you, Noria. Okay, so I will be bringing the screen back to the questionnaire and opening it up for city council questions and follow-up.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. Through the Vice Mayor, I'll kick off the questions. What has been a recent city or government at any level action that you were supportive of and and also what, and why, and what was a recent city or government at any level action that you disagreed with and why?
I'm very happy with the decision to reopen businesses as soon as possible during the COVID nineteen pandemic and to establish some sort of a pedestrian area in downtown Menlo Park. I think it's, it was great for the morale of everybody to see all these businesses opening again. When it comes to bad decisions, I don't see anything that I can disapprove, except that I'm very concerned about the fact that the chief of police suddenly resigned. And that was a concern, but I, it obviously wasn't something you provoked, so I cannot say that I disapprove with this action.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
You had noted that for zoning, the way you would do outreach was knocking on doors and block parties. Do you want to expand on that at all, or is that? I just want to give you an opportunity to describe any outreach you would do as a district council member.
I just can give you an example. I contacted the the police department and I asked them if somebody could, we, we had a little, there is a cadda sack at the end of our street, and we had a little gathering. And I asked them if somebody from the police department could come and just give us a briefing on how to 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 increase safety in our street. And they immediately sent somebody and this officer came and talked to us, and it was, it was done without any, you know, bureaucratic, you know, filing papers or anything. He just took a phone call. So that's the way I would, I would proceed. If anybody is calling and saying, look, we're having a block party, would you like to attend and talk to us? And there is, there is a lot of block parties going on in the, in Menlo Park.
Thank you.
So maybe to to reach at this, we would be efficient.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Ms. Zaslow. This is Ray Mueller, and I just wanted to thank you first for your service as a Commissioner to the city. So volunteering your time on a commission is greatly appreciated. I wanted to ask the same question I've asked applicants before you. Is there some way that you can think of that you'd like to improve the city? And it doesn't necessarily mean fixing something. It can be adding something.
Well, what I would do at the park at the recreation, for example, I would, there used to be some more classes for for kids that I think they, they haven't reopened yet, after, after school activities and and things like that. I looked at the guide lately and many classes haven't resumed. And I think it would be a good thing to, to resume these classes, these, these activities.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, Ms. Zaslow. I have two questions. And there are follow-up, you briefly mentioned earlier about the Brown Act, and I was wondering if you can just explain more of your understanding of it.
Well, I believe the Brown Act guarantees the citizens to participate in the decision-making of the city. It guarantees that they have access to the, to the agenda and the minutes of every meetings. And is what, as it was said previously, guarantees as well that there is no backroom, you know, deals done, that everything, everything is is set, is done and said publicly. It guarantees transparency, basically. It guarantees also, I think it guarantees also that that the way members of commissions or city councils behave toward each other. I think it guarantees a certain decorum and behavior as well.
Thank you. And my last question is, what is your understanding of the city's priorities?
I believe the I understand the city's priorities are toward affordable housing, equity and finances as well to guarantee that the city keeps its triple A grading.
Thank you. And I just wanted to follow up with the council to see if there were any more questions for Ms. Zaslow.
No, there are none.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Noria, for your time this evening. I'm going to be changing your role to attendee. And again,
Thank you.
Feel free to hang out. All right. So our next candidate is going to be Nicole Chemeny.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Taylor, Mayor Wallison, and all of the council members. I had a similar reaction to Edward, who spoke earlier, that after hearing the litany of Ray's accomplishments, I was surprised everybody didn't run out the back door. It was really quite intimidating. So, thanks for that. I'll get started. My husband and I and our two daughters moved into our house in two thousand nine year old school. My daughters are both at Menlo Atherton High now. And I've spent most of my time while living here as a board member and president of three fifty Silicon Valley, where we mobilize local citizens to take climate action, both individually and also to advocate for good climate policies at all levels of government and including regional regulators. This, when I wasn't doing that, I was spending time with my family, volunteering at my kids' schools, playing in local orchestras, reading books, hiking. So, right now, I serve as an ESL tutor and conversational, a conversation partner in a bilingual English class at MA. I'm on the Advisory Committee for ACTARA and on the Board of Smart Yards Education, which is a San Jose nonprofit, which trains people to conserve water and install native gardens using permaculture methods. Before we moved here, I worked in Chicago, most notably on affordable homeownership programs and policies, anti-redlining advocacy locally and nationally. And I have a degree in urban planning. Menlo Park is beautiful and livable town, and my vision for our future is to keep making it more beautiful, more livable, and more vibrant for everyone, while also welcoming more people to live here and trying to do those things as sustainably as we can with an eye to our future. I enjoy working as part of a team, and I would really be excited to be part of making decisions that will affect quality of life in our city for all the people who live here. That concludes my intro.
Thank you, Nicole. So I will go ahead and turn it back over to our city council for questions and follow-up.
Thank you, Ms. Chemeny. Through the the Vice Mayor, I'll kick off the first question. And is, has there, there been a recent council action that you you supported? And why? And and also, has there been a recent council action that you, you disapproved of? And and why?
I'll start with what I approved of. I was really impressed with all of the attention and careful work, thoughtfulness, negotiation that went on, passing the Willow Village Plan. Whether or not I would have supported it, I couldn't possibly say because I don't feel like I have enough information. But I think the way that you did the work, I was very impressed with and very heartened about how carefully done that was and how much energy was put in. I'm also really impressed with the environmental justice part of the housing element and the housing element. You know, same comment, as I said, about Willow Village with the care and thought and energy. But when, on the environmental justice portion of the housing element, I really took note of the fact that, I guess it was staff that solicited input from the grassroots groups that are located in the neighborhoods. And I don't know if they were directed to do so by council members or how that came about. But I was really impressed that that, I felt, was exactly how it should be done and was very appropriate. And I don't think it always happens that way. So as for something I'm less happy about, I am not sure if the whole Menlo, sorry, Middle Avenue parking issues to be revisited. You know, and I don't know what, if I had all the information, I could tell you what I thought the proper outcome would be, but I'm not an insider, so I don't. But I am, as you saw in my application, I'm really very concerned about the kids biking to and from school. As I said on my application, I could name, you know, off the top of my head, three children who have been hit by cars while riding their bikes to school. One of them, you know, whose mother I know very well, and it's very traumatic. Thank goodness they're all okay, but if enough of these things happen someday, somebody won't be okay. And I would like to address the outreach. I know that there were some who were unhappy. I have to assume that you thought carefully about the outreach that you did and that you must have taken advantage of many channels of communication. And I don't know exactly what all of the channels are that you used, but I'm confident that you thought about it. There are so many channels now to communicate with people that it's more fragmented, it's more difficult. And I also think everybody's really overwhelmed with information, and it makes it harder for them to take it in when you do try to share it with them. So it's easier for people to overlook or miss or not read or whatever. So while I think there will probably be always some people who are unhappy, my one thought about that was perhaps it would be interesting to talk to people who felt the outreach was inadequate and to find, to see what methods were used to reach them, and try to get to the bottom of why those were not successful. And maybe you would find that it was mainly elderly people who aren't online or don't look at websites. I don't know, I'm just making that up. I don't know, I'm just making that up. And then you could say, well, where might we best catch these people? Maybe, I don't know, I'll make up something. We need a bulletin board at CVS, Walgreens, Safeway and Trader Joe's or something that where we post, you know, what's going on in the city. I don't know, that could be a harebrained idea, but I'm just saying, I think to understand the perspective of the people that felt there was inadequate communication could be informative. So that's it for.
Thank you.
My answer to your question and your question, which I folded in.
So if you could make one improvement to Menlo Park, and it doesn't necessarily need to be fixing something, just an improvement, what would you do?
So you may be surprised by my answer, but I didn't know that I had you to thank for the guild. But that was a really exciting development. My family's into music. My daughter and I both play instruments. I took her to a concert there. It was really fun. It was really cool. And so I bowed down to you for bringing us the guild. And I think that if we had more exciting venues here for things like that, it would be really cool. If some of those could be accessible to younger people, that would be marvelous because as we know, I have two teenagers. There aren't that many places teens can really go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Kiminy. I have two questions. One is, what is your understanding of the Brown Act?
Well, before I heard all of the discussion tonight, my understanding of the Brown Act was that one city council person could confer with another city council person. But they, those two could not share the views of the other one with anyone else on the council. The idea being that city business needs to be conducted in public. And, you know, not just be like secretly discussed between council members. But I also was really happy when you said there's a training because I was going to ask if there was a book or something because I suspect that the Brown Act probably has quite a few requirements. And you probably really need to know all of them well, so you don't run afoul of any of those. You know. I think it probably takes a training to master all of that. And it's obviously extremely important to keep people's trust by not breaking those requirements.
Thank you. And my last question is, what is your understanding of the city's priorities?
Well, the housing element has to be resubmitted by January 31st. So that's complicated, big and pressing. So I would imagine that that's got to be number one on the list. And then, you know, I would say managing growth, which includes, you know, transportation, zoning, safety and all kinds of other things would be in that mix. And climate, you know, meeting the Climate Action Plan goals through implementation would be on that list of top three issues. As I said in my application, I wanted to put equity in the top three somewhere. But I realized that it's really just something that you have to be looking at whenever you're dealing with probably any issue that confronts city government, certainly those three all time in to justice and equity issues, you know, intimately. So while, you know, the historic racism and discrimination that we have are kind of baked into the way our city developed. You know, you can look at the specific things, housing being a major element. If you want to repair those historic injustices, housing is going to be one of the important ways that you do that. Access to resources in our city is going to be another. And so you can just say it's a lens that you view all those other issues through. Climate, very much so. I mean, when we had the heat wave, you know, I was really thinking, gosh, I can flee into my air conditioned car or my air conditioned house. Or I don't even have to use my air conditioning because I have a lot of trees over my roof, you know, that shade out my house and keep it cool. What if I didn't have that? You know, how would I be doing right now? Not too well. So, you know, climate right now has a tie in. And when you talk about flooding and the value of people's homes in the future, it's also going to tie in very importantly. So all these things are totally connected.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Kiminy from the DAS?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Nicole, for your time this evening. Much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
All right, so our final candidate this evening is Sally Cole.
Thank you. I'm Sally Cole. It's a pleasure to be here in city council chambers. And I really thank you all, including Judy, for the way you've run the process tonight. It's felt very fair and very professional. I've appreciated the opportunity to work with the members of the city council as Chair of the Complete Streets Commission, including the Middle Avenue Projects in Districts Four and Five, and also with Vice Mayor Taylor on traffic calming measures in Valhavn, and with Councilmember Combs on the City Heritage Tree Task Force. And through my recent experience on serving on the city task force and commissions, I've learned a lot about how Menlo Park city government works and operates and how to get things done. I think that experience will really help me to hit the ground running and do a great job representing the residents of District Five on the city council. Most recently, I chaired the public meetings on the Middle Avenue project, which I feel produced really constructive public discussion with record participation at the time. In addition, in my time as Chair of Complete Streets, I've streamlined the work to make meetings more time efficient, while at the same time bringing a higher standard of thoughtfulness and thoroughness to our review of city proposals and decisions. And as a commission, we are newly energized and refocused and engaged. So what do I bring to this role beside this experience? I do have a deep background in public service. Prior to living in Menlo Park, I've worked in public service at the city, state and federal level ever since I was a teenager. I've done, I've worked for the city of Boston, reviewing zoning petitions and regulations. I worked for the state of New York, working on financing of subway cars in the New York City subway system. But in all the things I've done, including working in Washington at the EPA, what this experience has taught me is that public service is hard. There are always constraints, existing laws, budget issues, strong opinions, of course, politics. And in that environment, it takes great heart and great imagination to still see the possibilities. And then it takes great teamwork to make them happen. And that is what I hope to bring to the city council. At the same time, I feel like I bring a fresh perspective. I've just recently spent 15 years working in tech at Google and Apple, and that really shaped the way I work and the way I think about achieving great results with other people under very complex environments like the one that the city council works in. So from those experiences, I just want to share that I've come to believe that collaboration is really the key to everything in the world we live in today. And through my work at Apple, I ended up developing this set of kind of words to live by that I wanted to share because I think it will help them understand how I would work on city council. The first thing I try to live by is that, you know, my idea is not the best idea. In my experience, the best ideas always come from people chipping away together and offering diverse perspectives. And that always ultimately makes it better. So I've learned to invite that process in everything I do. The second is that great ideas come from everywhere and unexpected places. So listen to everyone and really listen and be inclusive. Lastly, I've learned that to constantly look for ways to make the way I work and the way people on teams I'm on work as efficient as possible and save time. It sounds like a small thing, but what in the end I think it does is free up people's time and energy and creativity to really come up with original thinking and breakthrough ideas. I was really excited to read what Commissioners Sebrian Altman and King wrote about working with me and their endorsements. It was gratifying to hear they felt I brought a fresh perspective, creative solutions and a new, more inclusive way of working on the Complete Streets Commission. Before I close, I just want to emphasize that I've, in my jobs at Apple and Google, I worked on employee communications. And tonight, many things that people have said have really touched me about Menlo Park and that the desire from all the folks who spoke about building more community. Employee communications at its best was really about building community and giving people a sense of connection and a sense of togetherness and purpose. That's kind of what makes life good and manageable. And I think it's wonderful to hear how positive everyone feels about living here and how much they want to reach across income levels and districts and everything else to feel pride in living here and shared values. Lastly, I just want to say that if I were to work on the council, I would want to better understand the concerns.
So sorry for the interruption, Sally, but we are at five.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
All right. So yes, we will open it up to questions from the city council.
If you want, I'll give you the time for my question to finish up, or you can answer it.
Oh, that's kind of you.
You've heard, you've heard it seven times. So you can answer it or you can finish up.
Okay, I think I can answer it in another way. No, I'll say this. What I wanted to say, thank you, Drew, was that I wanted to say to each of you and to Vice Mayor Taylor and also Mayor Wilson, that it would really be my intent to better understand the concerns of the neighborhoods and residents of all of the districts that you represent so that we could work together to achieve great outcomes and quality of life for everyone in Menlo Park, no matter what district they live in. And that's a value that I feel I would live by. Thank you.
How would you go about beyond what has happened already with within the Complete Streets Commission for the outreach? What other ideas do you have, given the response that we've heard that there is more outreach that could be done?
So I was going to take one for the team and say that the thing I, that decision I or action by the council that I didn't support was actually the way outreach went on on middle and and say that that's a humble thing, I humbly admit. I've thought about this a lot, but I think what's wonderful about it is that we are reflecting on it because it only means that we'll do it better. And there's, I think, the first step, I agree with Nicole, I think the first step is we need to find out how people get their information. And for the people who said, I never heard anything, what is the way in which they hear news? One of the things that I was talking to one of our commission members about the other day was that, you know, you always know when a heritage tree is going to be removed because there was that big yellow sign on the tree. And it sounds simple, but typically in communications, you want to get people to pay attention to something exactly at the moment when it's relevant to them. So one of the recent ideas we discussed was the simple fact of why didn't we just put up signs the way we do for parking removals? You know, actual physical sand, you know, sandwich signs on Middle Avenue to say, hello, we are considering removing parking, you know, either on one or both sides of the road. And if the, you know, right next to where the parking is and, you know, come to this meeting or or call this number or talk to Kevin Chan or whatever it might be, give people a variety of ways to have provided their feedback. But I do think that all these comments and all our thoughts we've had about where we failed in in Middle Avenue to reach everyone and close that gap really says to argues for me that we need to do a complete assessment of sort of communications around, you know, council affairs outward to the public and also what we can do, what public outreach means. Now, what are, because I believe the staff did more technically than was required around Middle Avenue, and we still didn't get there. So what does outreach look like? What form should that take place? When we're doing different things like, you know, parking removals and Middle Avenue, et cetera, to the public? I think there has to be a broader assessment to engage people.
Thank you.
Okay, last time I get to ask question. Ms. Cole, what, if there is anything that you would do to improve Menlo Park? Doesn't necessarily need to be fixing something, but what improvement would you make to the city?
Well, I did write about this in my application. And I thought a lot about it yesterday, and a lot of people have spoken to it here, so it's pretty inspiring to me. I think that we might want to make one of the priorities, build community. I think there's this real need that I've heard tonight in people's voices, and I've been thinking about myself that we haven't really figured out a way to get people in Menlo Park to feel like they all belong here and they they all share something together, that their shared experiences that they know what Menlo Park stands for and they and they believe in that purpose. And so I think a lot of that is communication, but a lot of that too is, I think, when, when, for example, I think one of the things that was done well, I agree, I think Willow Village was done very well. That that act and the way that the council spoke about Willow Village and the decisions you made and how hard you worked on it, to me, really defined Menlo Park's approach to working with a large corporation on a major development like that. Because between the environmental piece and the housing piece, it defined what that was. And so when I think about what we could do better, it's it's more communication around those things. What do we stand for and what is our approach to X, Y and Z that reflects back on our values? And then I think it's absolutely bringing people together, building community across the districts. A lot of people have mentioned this, but certainly at Apple and Google, a really big piece of building community was events and shared experiences. And I think there's really seems like a need for that, and I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. I have two questions. The first is, what is your understanding of the Brown Act?
Yes, so the Brown Act applies to the commission that I'm on currently, as well as to the council. My understanding of it has always been that it is designed to promote transparent decision making, that the intent is that when council members or commission members are talking about items on the agenda or that affects the public, et cetera, items of business, that they talk about them in an open forum like this and not behind the scenes. So my understanding is that, you know, I, as a commissioner, can talk to another commissioner and share an opinion. But the conversation has to stop there. We can't include a third person or that person can can't then tell a third person, which would make three people talking about it in essence. That's my understanding of it.
Thank you. And then my last question is, what is your understanding of the city's priorities?
My understanding of the city's priorities are number one, affordable housing, without a doubt. I think every single thing the city does to promote that and and make it happen will will be very proud of in many years to come. Secondly, I think managing growth and development in general, which as we look at different sites like SRI. And again, when you looked at Willow Village and when you looked at Stanford Development at Middle Avenue in El Camino, everyone wants to maintain the quality of life in Menlo Park and maintain its beauty and character. And I think the council's done a really good job of being very meticulous and careful about managing growth and development in a way that's designed to do that. People tonight, I know Nicole said equity. In my application, I had written about affordability. I agree that I think it's a lens that the council members need to really look at every decision in front of them and every project that they're looking at through the lens of affordability. It's a really critical, critical issue. And I know affordable housing is a piece of it. But I appreciated when I was sitting in on a city council meeting recently, when you were talking about gas blowers. And I think Councilmember Combs or Mueller, or maybe both of them made the point of just, you know, that these are gardeners, they're now going to have to potentially spend money on equipment. And that's difficult if they can no longer use gas blowers. So how are we going to phase that in or provide incentives, help them do that? I think that's a good example of constantly bringing that lens of affordability in when it's a really critical issue. Finally, with climate change, I worked, I've worked for many years on environmental. Finally, with climate change, I worked, I've worked for many years on environmental policy, I would say that one of the things where I might look for improvement from the council is that, for some reason, the climate plan itself or how it's all tied together hasn't been coming across. It feels like sometimes we're talking about gas blowers and sometimes we're talking about gas stoves, but I somehow feel that the whole panoply of ways that people can participate and reduce their carbon footprint hasn't been necessarily packaged or offered or educated around as as opportunities and choices people can make. Rather, it seems like we're focusing on one kind of critical point or or particular point at a time. It seems a bit broken up. It's a big priority, but I think we could do a better job to get people on board.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. And just want to follow up with the council one last time if there were any more questions for this candidate.
No, there are not.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Sally. I am going to give one more call for our two applicants that were unable to participate at their given time. That was Tom Van and Diana Noe. If you are able to rejoin or join us this evening, please engage that hand feature. Okay, so that will conclude the interview portion of this item. Vice Mayor, we can take public comment at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Please take public.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
May I request another five minute break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll return at nine twenty-three.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, want to welcome back our Vice Mayor and Mayor. Our members of council who are participating in person are back at the dais. So Vice Mayor Taylor, we can reconvene.
Thank you. And Ms. Heron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you so much. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item D two, consider and interview candidates and adopt a resolution appointing a member to the Office of Menlo Park City Council for District Five for the unexpired term of City Council Member Mueller. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. For any members of the public who are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to a clerk's desk. Okay, this will be the final call for public comment on our regular business item D two. And our first speaker will be Jenny Michelle.
All right, Ray, you got me sobbing and I miss Catherine too. And I'm sending you all my love. Jenny Michelle from the Coleman Place Neighborhood Blog, long, longtime resident of District Three on Willow Road and in the business of life safety. Median sales price in Menlo is 2.2 million, which is a 400,000 annual obligation for the note and taxes alone. C-suite executives and high-level tech workers are in that bracket. That leaves out all the rest of us. I'm curious what your approach is to affirmatively furthering fair housing. Do you agree with Palo Alto to create an entirely new segregated neighborhood, absolutely reinforcing disparities and access to resources? Or do you agree with Redwood City in their downtown eight-story apartment buildings that are helping to drive climate stability and resilience because of the fractional carbon load the residents draw compared to our low-density neighborhoods? Have the HOA or homeowners associations you represent or work with analyzed how you contribute to current segregation practices? What is your association doing to increase fair housing in your neighborhood? When you say safe streets, do you mean slow streets like no vehicle traffic? Safe for emergency and mobility impaired? Or perhaps safe for overnight vehicle parking for local workers? Or, or are you proposing a 10-minute walking neighborhood? So we can stay out of our car, walk to that corner lot with that sexy fun eatery and small local grocer? Seeing the smiling, happy people I recognized, like the lab tech, the contractor? And is that that English teacher? Never feeling impacted by the three levels of apartments on top? To that end, my first choice is Maria Door, who has demonstrated background of accomplishing impossible feats, is young and has a relationship to the ground lesser whose leases are rolling up at the end of 25. We need somebody who is able to drive and secure market interest and force for fair housing on that land in that district. By way of those projects, transportation on Sand Hill Artery will be beefed up and local low-density owners will be appeased. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item D two. Our next speaker is Caitlin Dark.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Great. So I just wanted to speak tonight in support of Catherine Carlton. I think her, her experience on the council speaks volumes for what she could do for Menlo Park. I think that she is dedicated and collaborative. I don't think that she gets involved in the minutia of politics. I think she looks at the black and white facts. She's been elected twice before by the residents of Menlo Park. The residents have demonstrated, demonstrated a strong desire for Kat Carlton to represent them. I am definitely one of them. I have worked alongside Kat Carlton for over, for the past 20 years, I would say, in various roles through the Junior League, through the Vista Center for the Blind Visually Impaired. Kat is a person who rolls up her sleeves. She gets to know her constituencies, her stakeholders. She, she is, she's hands down the number one person that should fill Ray's position. She has the experience and the knowledge of how the city council works. And she's definitely bipartisan. And I can endorse her 100% and don't see that there's anybody that would contend her position. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. With that, I see no further hands and no cards. So Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comment. At this time, I want to open it up for a city council candidate discussion.
Vice Mayor, this is Councilmember Combs asking to be acknowledged.
Thank you.
So, you know, my thinking is that I would actually like to see this item continued and the council make this decision on a different date. And and I'll walk through my reasoning. The the deadline to apply ended last night. And and I I think that there there just hasn't been enough time to see what, what, who are the full slate of candidates? There hasn't been enough time for a full newspaper article that that covers that. I think enough time for the residents in District Five to be fully I think enough time for the residents in District Five to be fully aware of who, who the, the potential candidates are. I always joke that like when I was mayor, like literally 60% of the time when I run into someone, he was like, wait, so he's not the mayor anymore? And it's because it takes time, there's a lag, you know, all of this stuff is like, we learn about it in real time, but the rest of the city learns about it sometime after. And I'm not saying that like this gets continued for, for some date far in the future. I think the council, the, the city staff had mentioned some, some ideas. But for me in making this decision, that would make me feel most comfortable because we're taking what normally is an election process that is spread over months. And for me, this is felt like, you know, speed dating to some degree. And while I know we cannot replicate the election process with this process, I do think we can give it a little bit time to make sure that, that it is measured, to make sure that we're, we're being fully, fully transparent. And that given just again, like I say, a few more days for, for, for residents to be, be fully aware that this is happening. So those are my thoughts. That's what I'm thinking and wanted to throw that out there and see, see what, what my colleagues thought.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
I was, actually, I was going to ask Councilmember Nash or Councilmember Mueller if you had any feedback to what Councilmember Combs just shared.
So I was actually going to agree with Councilmember Combs and add to that, that I think that it would be worthwhile having the applicants know a little bit more about what's entailed with the job and also about the Form 700 reporting requirements and just make sure that everyone is as well-informed as possible, both from the resident side and also the applicants.
I probably am the person to let these matters in making this decision. So I defer to Vice Mayor Taylor and Mayor Willison. I mean, effectively, you guys are making a decision to replace me. So, and it's going to be the colleague who you work with. So if you guys want to delay it, the only problem I have is that I did not schedule to be at our city council meeting tomorrow night. And so I'm looking at everyone to say, how long are you going to push this off? Because it's, it's basically like, we said goodbye tonight, but it's bonus time. So, and I haven't, I, so, yeah, so what does that schedule look like if my other colleagues are in agreement that they want to push this off? How long are you guys? Want to push it off? I'll be candid, I can, I can vote tonight. Or I carry, we can push it off. So I'm not sure in, on a contrarian argument for you all. I agree the process is quick. There are reasons for that, obviously. I don't know if a delay of one or two days make a substantive difference. It will give a difference of appearance. But the substantive outcome, I'm unless the press were to dig up something on someone, they've had time to do, I'm not sure the substantive outcome would be different. The appearance of outcome certainly would be affected. So for that reason, I'm comfortable making a vote tonight because I'm not sure substantively anything's going, going to be much different. Unless but I could be wrong. I respect you guys' opinion on that and candidly to like, it's a very, it's an environment where you're picking someone who's going to be up here with you guys for two years. So if you just need some time, be comfortable with that. I accept that. So I will stop talking and listen to, and listen to what my other colleagues might think.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I appreciate your, your feedback and I will turn it over to Mayor Willison at this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. My concern is that as we get into the holiday week, and I know schools, the last day of schools are either tomorrow or Friday, at least for MPCSD and the high school. I worry that we're going to lose a window where residents are paying attention. I think people may be with families and traveling. So I'm just trying to think of it from a, a resident ability to, to pay attention and, and have this on their radar while it, obviously, the compressed timeline is not ideal. I do worry that we're going to lose people for the holidays. And then my other question becomes with the housing element. I, I realized that if we were to appoint tonight and we have a meeting tomorrow, that we're asking a, a brand-new council member to do quite a lift, but to have a fifth opinion for a big conversation about the housing element is also very important. So I just want us to consider that. I obviously thought this was important enough to, to, to stay on. I'm clearly not feeling well. So I'm prepared to vote, but I also, if other colleagues are not comfortable with that, I understand that as well. I just want us to consider the time of year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. I appreciate you making an effort to contribute to this conversation with the council. And I agree with Councilmember Nash and Councilmember Combs. But further, I mean, I have to thank every single person that applied for this position as representing District Five. I had no idea we were going to have 13 applicants. I had no idea how well this process was actually going to go until it actually happened. I am concerned about making a decision like this, that is a two-year decision and on a timeline this short. If we only had three candidates, it would be easy. But we had several good candidates this evening and trying to hash that out at 9:45 at night. I don't see myself being able to select just one person to be able to fill the District Five seat. The other is there's something missing for these candidates that we all received as candidates who had a campaign. And that is the introduction to the city, how each department works. Just information that the candidates don't have. Actually, only one candidate would have that because she was formerly in office. So that was the other piece that I was concerned about. And then also the housing element as well. Just things are moving quickly because I know that we have a legislative deadline. However, I just want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence as a council to make sure that people are informed. And that has been one of the key, key points that several of the candidates have brought up was just around communication. So my question, and I honestly am not available next week. The dates that are in the staff report, I'm not available. So if we're choosing a date for me, it would be sometime the first week of January. So my question for the city manager is, is, is it possible to have a city presentation? And I think Councilmember Nash brought up the discussion around the Form 700. Is it possible to have that happen within a two-week period or is that not possible for the candidates? And it can be virtual. It wouldn't have to be in-person or whatever would be, whatever the staff selected.
Let's see, so in terms of being able to produce a, what, what we've historically called a candidate information session. In terms of the next two weeks, as you said, next week's extremely challenging. Those dates were only suggested because there's only going to be two, two staff people that are really focused in on that. So I would avoid next week. So it would probably be the, the week thereafter. So the, the first week of January. But if it's similar to what we produced in the fall for the council candidates, I think we could do that, that first week of January. If that's the desire of the council.
Thank you. And my second question is, is how will this change impact the, the housing element, the study session?
Sorry, just to confirm, is that a question for me?
Yes, please, Justin.
Let's see, so just to kind of, and part of it would be for the, the, I'll probably try to answer it for the benefit of a larger audience and not necessarily the council per se, because the council may be aware of this. But tomorrow night is a study session on the housing elements, a continuation from a meeting that was held earlier this month, I think December 6. And so there's a lot of material that was released December 6. We did release some additional information on Mondays, kind of follow-up to some of the questions that we've received. And so that, that material is out there. If the council can conduct its meeting tomorrow night with, without having appointed a council member, we would still, we're, we're pretty much on a preset, the, the schedule that's outlined in that staff report that identifies a joint planning commission, housing commission meeting in the middle of January and the city council special meeting on January 31st is pretty well set. I don't think we'd have many opportunities for another check-in with the city council beyond, beyond tomorrow night until we, we come back to the council on the 31st.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And now I have one additional question, and this is regarding what Councilmember Mueller said. Is, is there a way to capture his feedback if he will not be present for the meeting tomorrow regarding the District Five candidates?
Let's see, just to confirm a question for, for me again?
Yes, please.
Part, part of it would be, and I'll take a stab at it. I could also maybe defer to the council member itself, but that there's opportunities for this evening or tomorrow or different ways for producing some feedback. So I think there, there could potentially be some opportunities for feedback. So happy to kind of talk through what some of the specifics may be, but there's a difference between voting on something versus providing some feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
So I appreciate you. I appreciate very much you wanting to capture my feedback. This is one of those moments of just candidness with my colleagues. I didn't prepare for the meeting tomorrow. So I actually thought tonight was goodbye. So so and then I have to go back and figure out what I do about all this. So I would respectfully say to everyone, let me check with a personal life at home. Let me see if I can manage to get everything juggled tomorrow that I'm a, that I would approach this with the same manner of professionalism that would be expected. And, but I would also invite our applicants to come tomorrow to the study session and provide your feedback in the study session as if you were a colleague. Because one of you I envisioned tonight would be there tomorrow to do that. There is another wrinkle to this that I would point out to my colleagues, and that would be that on January, so if you wait until the first week of January, obviously, I won't be able to vote on it. I could provide my feedback on that as well, which I think is probably what I will do. But so in between now and then, maybe the, I mean, I honestly don't. It's whatever you guys are comfortable with at this point. I will, I had sort of promised that I would not be entering this council chambers again unless invited or honoring someone. But I will take this as an invitation in the first week of January to come and share with you my opinion on that vote that hopefully will have some weight. And but so I think that's where, that's how I would best be able to handle this for you all as a colleague this evening. I did want to say to the applicants, incredibly impressive. This is an incredibly impressive pool of applicants. The diversity of background, the diversity of the way of looking at the district, I would, I think it's going to be a heck, I don't know how this is going to end up, but it's going to be a heck of an election year two years from now. If you're not, if you're not appointed, run. One of the things I have a big concern about in Menlo Park, and I'll just say it. And we're seeing it throughout the county is the move to districts is actually resulting in less people running and less contested elections than it was supposed to have the opposite effect. And I think what we saw tonight through the appointment process is that people are actually interested in serving. And one of the things that happened in this is there was a lot of interest because we were, you know, we texted everyone in the city. There's like newspaper articles, and so a lot of people got interested and engaged. So, and if you're not appointed, there are commissions to get on. A lot of things you expressed interest in about tonight. There are, and candidly, some of the things that you're interested on in, that you think the city might not be doing, there's some work being done there. Get involved and bring that passion to that, to it. Because you guys are just a perfect example of the wealth of amazing people in the city who have a great diversity of perspective to add to it. So I'm off my soapbox. I'll shut up and that's probably maybe the last time I talk in this council chambers for some time unless I can figure out how to be, how to be a contributing colleague who's available tomorrow evening. Vice Mayor Taylor, can I, I chime in?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. First, when I had first sort of thinking of the idea of continuing an item, it was in, and, and thinking of the dates that the staff initially projected and the last date there was the 27th. And so that's what I had in my mind, which was a, a virtual, which you guys said would be a virtual meeting, right? And, and, and that would have allowed Councilmember Mueller to participate to the extent to which he, he was available. And so just for some, some clarity there, that, that is my mind and continuing what's still to a timeline in the future that again, like I said, provided what I thought an opportunity for a little bit more transparency for, for a little bit more of a, of a measured process than, than we're getting, getting down to. So you know, for, for me, it's just that, again, like I have, over the course of my, you know, my tech and journalism career been literally involved in hundreds of hiring decisions. And, and, and not one was you get the final application the night before, then you, you do interviews and then you, you make that decision on the spot, like, right? And so, and so I don't think that it is, it is the best for, for me in, in coming to what is, is the, the right decision. And I think what is, was a really, really important decision. So you, you know, I appreciate that there are some, some trade-offs here, but, but that was what I was looking at as, as far as me being able to make the, the best decision. And, and I do think it's important in looking at the meeting tomorrow night though to, to frame. It is, it's a study session, so, so no, like official vote. And, and while it is an important opportunity in form for the council and also the public to provide feedback, the main levers as it relates to the housing element are already in place and are not changing. So that
So that, that horse has left the barn some time ago. The main levers as it relates to the housing element are, one, opportunity sites, two, zoning. And those decisions have already been made, and those things are already in place. There is some, some, some elements for like, what are our assumptions? But no one has told me that there is going to be any additional opportunity sites identified or that we are looking to change zoning decisions that have already been, been made and presented in the draft. And someone from staff can correct me if I'm wrong. But, but so I do want to put in context that I think tomorrow night is, is, is important. But it is not as if whoever was going to represent District Five was going to come in and we were going to result in a substantively changed housing element. That certainly wasn't, wasn't going to happen. So I do think it's important to, to point that out. Nonetheless, I will be here tomorrow, and so your feedback is welcome. Again, I would hope that we could do it on, on, as far as switching back to, on a timeline that could allow Councilmember Mueller to participate. But all I can say is, at this moment right now, tonight, I don't feel that like I have, I have the space or time to make, I think, to make, to allow for the environment, for what is the right and good decision. And so, and so that's where I'm at.
Vice Mayor Taylor, may I add something?
Yes.
So to my, to my residents, my constituents, they're going to, they might be scratching their head saying, well, worldwide is Henry fighting this because giving up his vote, potentially. But I would suggest to my colleagues, because I'm always transparent on things like this, and to those constituents, in some ways, you're actually making the opinion on that day more salient or important. Because I want, if I come into chambers on that day and I can't vote, and I say, but this is how I would have. Now we have an issue where my district is going to say, wait a second. So I point that out to it, I pointed out to my district. But I also don't, I'm not going to fight you guys on this tonight. I care about what you guys think, and I don't want the last thing that I do in the city to be like a fight. I respect you, I respect the city. But I do need to address my, the constituents in my district and say that in doing so, I don't think this is catastrophic. I actually think that the opinion I express on that day may be given a little more weight. And I see my colleagues shaking their head, yes. So that gives me some, some peace. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. And just wanted to check in with either the city manager, city attorney, or the city clerk. What are the next steps? Do we need to pick a date?
Yes, it may, it may indeed be a team effort. So thank you, Vice Mayor, and maybe I'll start and then seek assistance from the city attorney and city clerk. So if possible, it would indeed be best to pick a date certain this evening. It, there's certain kind of logistics associated with that. So if we're going to go down the path of picking a date certain, I can see where that may take a little bit of time to kind of coordinate some schedules, calendars. I know there's going to be some, a little bit of work associated with that. So I think from a staff perspective, the recommendation preference would be to attempt to find a date certain. If the council is not desirous of finding a date certain, then the city will need to completely renotice the entire process over again. So we're looking at a bare minimum, I'd say, three weeks. Because it's, we have to launch it for two weeks, and it takes about a week to launch it. So I think the lead time is probably about three weeks from, from today. So I think that's the basic, my understanding of the basic situation in terms of the timeframe. So look to the city attorney, city clerk, if there's anything more to add that in terms of the timeframe. Because I think once we understand that, then we can kind of go into the, some of the specifics from there.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Councilmember Nash, Combs, and Mueller, three weeks. I wasn't expecting to hear that, if it's not next week.
Actually, if you don't mind, I believe as long as it's continued to a date certain, we can do it the first week of January, we just have to choose a date.
Through the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, that's accurate. So if the council elects to continue this hearing or this agenda item to a date certain, then a new notice will not need to be posted and circulated. We would notice a continuance of the meeting.
Thank you for clarifying. So at this time, we need to pick potential dates. If we're looking at the first week of January, so I'll just put out two dates, the January third or January fourth.
They work for me and for Councilmember Combs.
Vice Mayor, I am aware of scheduling conflict that the mayor does have that first week of January.
So I may have a conflict on January third, and I did, I do want to attend the meeting. So I get sworn in that day. So there may be, I may not be able to attend the meeting. On Friday the fourth in the evening, I believe.
But then is the mayor available? The mayor's not available at all that first week in January, according, right, to the, so then, then we're into the second week of January.
My apologies, I'm available the ninth and the tenth, the second week of January in the evening.
Thank you. And I believe we have a council meeting on the tenth.
So could we, we do like a special meeting on the ninth? And then if that person is whoever is elected, would be sworn in and start serving on the tenth?
So we do have a planning commission meeting scheduled for the ninth. I mean, maybe we can shift things, but as of now, we do have planning commission scheduled on the ninth.
The planning commission meetings typically start at seven, but in this chamber, so that, running two meetings in this chamber back to back could be difficult. But it could be a, the council meeting was, or the council, or the commission meeting, where one of those was virtual only. That may be a different story.
Can we do the meeting virtual on the ninth and start at five?
We could, as long as the meeting adjourns before the start of the planning commission. Because they'll still be utilizing a hybrid, a hybrid.
And that's at seven, right?
Yes, so they called order at seven.
I mean, again, I don't think it's going to be a two-hour or even, I, obviously, I can't, I can only speak for myself. But I imagine we're not going to do public comment again. It is just going to be council, or essentially a limited council discussion, and then you're going to, you're going to distribute the ballots. And so I don't know, again, like, I don't see it as a, as likely an especially long meeting.
Yes, so if we do a continuation of this meeting, that is correct. We don't need to reopen public comment, we don't need to re-interview, none of those things need to occur. So it could just be the appointment process that we do on that special meeting.
Okay, but then, now that I'm thinking like, how does Supervisor Mueller play a role, given that we won't be opening up public comment? So does he even get to play a role?
Well, the mayor could reopen public comment for the item.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Not just for one, obviously, one speaker, but just in its entirety.
But public comment can be real.
Correct.
I was just going to suggest that we do open public comment because I think one of the reasons would be to get more input from residents, and that would allow that. Perhaps it would be limited to two minutes. And perhaps, I don't know if we could give Councilmember Mueller additional time. I certainly am very, very, very interested in his comments and input.
So, yeah, so we could, again, reopen public comment through the mayor. When it comes to, you know, limiting public comment, again, that's at the discretion of the mayor. When it comes to additional public comment, there's always the donation of time. So there are, there is some flexibility with all of those attributes.
Great, so for the, for the benefit of Vice Mayor, who may not be able to see the head nods, I am seeing some head nods on the dais about, so just to recap, it seems like continuing this item to a date certain of Monday, January ninth with a five P M. start time with the goal of completing by seven P M. And there would be opportunity for, for public comment at that meeting.
That, that is clerk's understanding as well, Councilmember Nash?
I just want to, I'm wondering whether we have two applicants who are not able to make it tonight. Do we allow them to have their interview, perhaps abbreviated or not? I don't have a clear opinion, I just want to make it.
I may turn to our city attorney on kind of that process.
I, I think the city manager and I will probably want to discuss that offline, that we can provide a recommendation to the city council on that, and our recommendation can be public if the council's inclined.
That works for me, to make it public, so that way, unless there's an issue with that. My guess is the two candidates that applied that weren't here this evening, that it was circumstances that they didn't have any control over. That's my assumption. So at this time, City Clerk Erin, there isn't anything else the council needs to do?
We, we need a motion to continue the item to a date certain of January ninth at five P M. For, and it sounds like it's a virtual only meeting.
Thank you, City Attorney Doherty. Do we have a motion to continue the meeting?
I'll move as, as a motion as outlined by the city attorney.
I'll second. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Combs and a second by City Councilmember Nash to continue this item to January ninth, two thousand twenty-three at five P M. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I'm going to have to, I can't support the motion, but what I'll do is I'll respectfully abstain. I think my colleagues understand why.
Thank you. City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously, thank you. My apologies, motion passes with City Councilmember Mueller abstaining.
Thank you, Ms. Erin. And at this time before?
Vice Mayor, could I just add one thing? Okay, so it's for the benefit of all the candidates and for the public for tomorrow night's city council study session on the housing element that, and it's within the topic of zoning. Within the staff report from Monday, what staff did try to do was to itemize a number of, some of the specifics of the zoning that would eventually need to transpire. And part of it is that the timeline for some of those changes. So there's a grouping of what's called a zoning ordinance amendment or grouping of things that are zoning map amendments. And another grouping is potential changes to the specific plan. So the ordinances to effectuate those changes are not included, but we did attempt to just itemize what all the various zoning, kind of more general term is zoning changes would be. So just for the prospective candidates, it may be helpful to kind of like tune into that, to that packet that was released on Monday for tomorrow night's study session.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And I have to give thanks that that supplement is, is short. It's less than fifteen pages, which I appreciate, so thank you. And at this time, before we adjourn the meeting, I'd like to make an announcement that there is a reception for Councilmember Mueller at the gatehouse after the meeting. And at this time, if there is no other city council discussion, this meeting is adjourned.